And the West. One of them says LCP appeal back Thomas Spurs.
Okay, I think we will go ahead and get started. It is seven o'clock. Welcome to the City of Pacifica. February 24th, 2020 meeting. 7:03. We have a closed session report.
No closed session tonight.
Great. And I will ask for you to call, roll?
Sarah. Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Councilmember Vatterlos.
Here.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Great, thanks. We have special present-- oh, no, we have salute to the flag tonight by Councilmember Mary Beer.
(Inaudible).
So tonight, we have a special proclamation. Is Horace here?
Yep.
Great, Horace. I will go ahead and read our proclamation for Sports Hall of Fame Week. Do you want to come up to the podium, or? You want to come up to the podium? City of Pacifica, Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame 2020 inductees. Whereas for 60 years, Pacifica has produced many talented athletes in both amateur and professional sports. And whereas the Pacifica Sports Club has formulated a Sports Hall of Fame to honor local sports celebrities. And whereas the City of Pacifica recognizes the Sports Hall of Fame as a lasting tribute to the rich sports history of Pacifica. And whereas the City of Pacifica has dedicated a wall of fame to the enshrined at the Pacifica Community Center. And whereas this year marks the 30th anniversary of the Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame induction ceremony, and will be held on February 29th, 2020. And whereas the 2020 Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame inductees are Mike Biancalana, President of the Tiger Shirts Pop Warner Football Program; Terry Linmo, collegiate basketball athlete; Brad Pence, community youth swim coach; and Michael Tang, Oceana High School Athletic Director. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica does hereby recognize the outstanding contributions these four Sports Hall of Fame inductees have made to sports recreation in the community, and join with the Pacifica Sports Club in honoring them on this special occasion. And now therefore, be it resolved, I, Deirdre Martin, Mayor, hereby proclaim the week of February 24th through February 29th, 2020, as Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame Week, done this 24th day of February 2020. Congratulations, Horace, and inductees.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And once again, 30 years, that's a milestone. That's an achievement that we've done. I don't think there's any other sports organization in the peninsula and around us that's been doing something like that for this long. So it's really a tribute to our city for recognizing our athletes, because we are a rich heritage of sports here in this community. And once again, the 30 years, as you read off the list of names tonight, and as you can see, they have quite of a consummate in their own rights. As well as the 160 people that are already into the Sports Hall of Fame, all walks of life. And you'll hear their stories once again when you come to the dinner. And of course, we welcome anybody to come to the dinner, and we'll see you at the dinner as well. So once again, Council, thank you very much for recognizing us this week as Sports Hall of Fame. Thank you.
Thank you, Horace. Are there any of the inductees here this evening? Are any of the inductees here this evening?
No.
No, okay. Would anybody like to say anything to Horace?
I would.
Yep.
Horace, thank you so much for everything that you've done for our community for so long. You know, I can remember sitting on that bench in the Terranova Gym, and we go, "Horace, take my picture, take my picture." You know, you've been doing this forever, and we really appreciate it. And I'm fortunate enough to have coached one of the inductees this year, so I will definitely be there.
Thank you.
I also wanted to thank Horace. I've known him for many, many years. And what's great about our sports programs is there's a lot of kids that-- it's not just playing on the fields, but it's also helps them get scholarships. I mean, my daughter got a four-year college scholarship for softball, and due to dormitory, tuition, books, everything. And that was because of the PGSL softball league. And that's not just the only story. I know people got it for wrestling, and basketball, and football, et cetera. So a lot of that has to do with the support of the community. And Horace is the head cheerleader of that community. And Marion, too. Behind every guy, there's a great woman, right?
That's right.
And so there's Marion also. So thank you, Horace, and Marion.
Thanks. Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, would you like to take a picture with the proclamation?
Not necessary.
Okay, then I have these for you.
I'll get it from Sarah. Thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, would you like to take a picture with the proclamation?
Not necessary.
Okay, then I have these for you.
I'll get it from Sarah. Thank you.
Horace, would you like to take a picture with the proclamation?
Not necessary.
Okay, then I have these for you.
I'll get it from Sarah. Thank you.
Horace, would you like to take a picture with the proclamation?
Not necessary.
Okay, then I have these for you.
I'll get it from Sarah. Thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, would you like to take a picture with the proclamation?
Not necessary.
Okay, then I have these for you.
I'll get it from Sarah. Thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, would you like to take a picture with the proclamation?
Not necessary.
Okay, then I have these for you.
I'll get it from Sarah. Thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, would you like to take a picture with the proclamation?
Not necessary.
Okay, then I have these for you.
I'll get it from Sarah. Thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, would you like to take a picture with the proclamation?
Not necessary.
Okay, then I have these for you.
I'll get it from Sarah. Thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, would you like to take a picture with the proclamation?
Not necessary.
Okay, then I have these for you.
I'll get it from Sarah. Thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, would you like to take a picture with the proclamation?
Not necessary.
Okay, then I have these for you.
I'll get it from Sarah. Thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you. And I'm fortunate enough to have coached one of the inductees this year, so I will definitely be there.
Thank you.
I also wanted to thank Horace. I've known him for many, many years. And what's great about our sports programs is there's a lot of kids that-- it's not just playing on the fields, but it's also helps them get scholarships. I mean, my daughter got a four-year college scholarship for softball, and due to dormitory, tuition, books, everything. And that was because of the PGSL softball league. And that's not just the only story. I know people got it for wrestling, and basketball, and football, et cetera. So a lot of that has to do with the support of the community. And Horace is the head cheerleader of that community. And Marion, too. Behind every guy, there's a great woman, right?
That's right.
And so there's Marion also. So thank you, Horace, and Marion.
Thanks. Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it. And I like to see all the plaques up on the wall in the community center of everyone who's been awarded in the past. And it really is a special thing for Pacifica. And you're special for Pacifica. And thank you.
Horace, thanks so much for all you do. It's such an inspiration. Unfortunately, won't be able to go this year. I'm going to be out of town, but I will be thinking about you. And I really do appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
I've attended for several years now, and I really enjoy it.
So it did cover the quiet time when the kids aren't out and, you know, and stuff. Because the concern is, is that we have no service at night, basically. We have no service on weekends, and very little, if any, service at the north end of town. And has there ever been any thought of trying to address those concerns?
Yeah, so in terms of the on-demand pilot, we did look at expanding the service area or service hours. And that would, at least in terms of expanding the service area, would likely increase the rate of the supply message, which I had mentioned earlier, because of the fact that there's just a greater length that the vehicle would be traveling potentially. And so, you know, overall, that's going to extend your ETAs, in particular with just one vehicle. For the hours, that would be challenging in terms of, we already have this issue in the morning. Our customer service center opens at 7:00, even though the service starts at 6:00. And so, those customers that want to call in, like after hours, it's a less-than-ideal situation that we've put together for them. So I think that by extending the operating hours, we'd be sort of exacerbating that same problem. But in general, with that, you know, those sort of questions about what's the best service to provide, a lot of that will be looked at in our Reimagine Samtrans effort. So we're going to be doing that sort of comprehensive evaluation, like where is the demand? How can we best structure our network to meet that?
So, did I hear you correctly, and you're saying that the customer support center doesn't, isn't open when the customers are using the bus? Because you said it starts at 6:00, and I guess the customer support center closes at what time?
So the workaround we have for the morning is that the customers are direct, we have, we provide them with a number they can call the dispatch center for our contracted operator. So they're still taken care of, it's just not as efficient as it could be.
Thank you.
No, speak here. Excuse me, if I can also add, sorry, April Chan with Samtrans, heading up the planning. And I do wanted to say that, really, when we introduced the on-demand, it was to look at how to potentially, I think, solve some of the issues that we originally heard about the Flex. We do recognize that there, there's, you know, the need to look at sort of the services that we need to provide in City of Pacifica. In the coast side, we actually completed a coast side study about two years ago. We are taking a look at those recommendations, but as part of the comprehensive operational analysis that we currently are doing, we wanted to take a look at how we can potentially take the recommendations that we looked at as part of the coast side study and include in the recommendations that we're going to be rolling out as part of the Reimagine Samtrans. That is all something that we're looking at right now. We're hoping to complete that study sometime by the end of this calendar year. So that is something that we're looking at. We hear the concerns that you're raising.
I agree with Mike. I think the seniors are the biggest concern because they have no service in the back on the weekends at all, and they're basically trapped. And we do have a new cab service that they can use now, which helps. And maybe, I wonder if that changed your ridership, I'm not sure. But it's very hard for them because they're just stuck in the back of the valley with nowhere to go. Thanks.
I would like to echo the need for service all over town, not just in this lower area of town. So, as you mentioned about incorporating that into the Reimagine Samtrans. And then, the other request I have is a scheduling request to please make sure that the day of the first day of school in our high schools is reflected in the scheduling. I know we had a problem with that last year, where school started, but the buses were, had not yet adjusted their schedule from the summer schedule. So I believe the calendars are all set now, and that shouldn't be, that's something to look into.
Thank you.
We do have a card from a member of the public. Yes, Kevin?
Mayor Martin, I had one question that I wanted to ask before we move on to public comment. Thank you, Daniel, for coming, and April, appreciate you coming here and presenting. Can you just provide for, for the public and our cast of the meeting, if the public wants to put, provide input into the Reimagine Samtrans program, how do they do that?
I believe there's a website. April would know the details.
Yeah, there is a website that where we're taking the comments. So let me just kind of provide you sort of the overall schedule. We had done a first round of outreach last fall, and we are going to take back a lot of the things that we have heard to our board this coming spring. We're going to be coming back out in terms of the, how we're going to be designing our routes and how we're going to be potentially redesigning sort of the whole network. We're going to be doing a second round of outreach, going out to the public, and so that will be sometime this early summer. And then, there will be a third round outreach after we have received that input and provided to our board, probably this fall. So it's going to be two more rounds of outreach. But what I'm more than happy to do is provide you both our schedule, and then in terms of how to get in touch, and in terms of the suggestions and comments that your members, community members have. And I can provide that to you and your team.
Do you happen to know offhand just the website? Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
And before I open it up to public comment, the only thing I would request is that if and when that does pass with the board, that you make sure that there's adequate notice to our public. You did a great job advertising the Flex, the on-demand Pacifica, it was awesome. We even got mailers. So I would just request that you do the same for that. And I think, I think we're going to be just fine with the Flex Pacifica. I have a bus stop in front of my house, and I don't see as many kids there with the on-demand as I do with the Flex, believe it or not. So I think you'll see ridership go back up, and maybe another time in another place. So, we do have one public comment, and...
If you can, please try to coordinate with Terranova, because I know they weren't anywhere aware that you were even considering this. And so if you take and stop this in May, their last day of school is sometime in May, so it'd be kind of nice if you, you know, so you don't have two different bus routes if one ends in May, whatever the last date is, and then starts up again the following day or whatever.
We'll make, we'll make sure to coordinate with their schedule.
Yeah, thank you.
For offering to get some data for us.
Of course.
Thanks. Okay, we've got one comment card, Roman Alper. Are you here, Roman?
Yeah, he's over there.
Roman, you've got three minutes? Yep.
Yeah, my question is, I think, similar to what was discussed a little bit earlier is coverage area. My son's a Terranova High School student, and oil changers on Sharp Park and Skyline is where he currently gets on the bus in the mornings and gets off the bus in the afternoon. If he participates in high school sports, which he started just a couple weeks ago, that no longer works, and his ability to go back home is kind of shot with, with the sports schedule. And so wondering if the service that's offered through Samtrans, the on-demand service, could expand its coverage map to cover that area. I understood very well from the presentation that it's, it's going to make it more challenging from a standpoint of wait times and so forth. So it's definitely going to stretch the service. If there will be a second bus added, I guess, that could be a consideration, is to expand the coverage map and include areas that aren't currently covered for those students who are looking to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. So the right people were in the room to hear that. If no one has anything else, we will thank you very much, Daniel and April, and look forward to hearing the results of that board meeting. Next, we have our consent calendar. I'm relying on red lights here, so if anybody has anything, I'm kind of keeping my eyes on this. We have, we have one item to be pulled from consent from a, from the public, and that's item number three. And Mike?
I move that we approve the consent calendar minus item number three.
I second.
Please vote. Okay, with that, consent item number three, I've got one card from Chris Redfield on approval of amendment number one between the City of Pacifica and Woodard and Kern, Inc., for supervisory control and data acquisition upgrade project management.
Thank you for that acronym. Thank you, staff, council. I just wanted to just, thank you for the approval. I hope you're going to approve all this good stuff. This was spoken on several months ago. The skating system is a super important system, given the history of Pacifica's wastewater issues. This is an investment in the city. This is a preemptive issue, a preemptive item that can control a lot of things that can happen, and we all know what's happened with, excuse me, Pacifica's wastewater issues. So I'd like to thank wastewater engineering staff, has worked very hard for many years to get several projects ahead and put Pacifica in the, finally, the 21st century. I had the opportunity to see a few of these systems in place, and to say antiquated is an understatement. So it's, it's high time that Pacifica finally gets up. This is preemptive. This can stop many, many issues that can, can really hurt Pacifica, not only environmentally, but financially. So thank you, and I appreciate your, your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone have anything else? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve item three on the consent, consent agenda.
Second.
Do you have one question I'd like to? Staff, Louis, how are you? Project man, number one, the amount of $182,000, increase the cost ceiling of the agreement from $79,400 to $262,000. How did we get $182,000 off on doing this? Or am I reading it wrong?
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, so there is an addition of $180,000 of additional work we're adding to this contract. So, the initial approval of this contract was $79,000. So, these, this change order includes some additional design that was not included in the original proposal. And including the additional design is also the construction management portion of it as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Did I have, did I get a second?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Okay, please vote. Passes? All right, we're moving on to oral communications. We have a few cards here, starting with, so everybody knows the rules here. You get three minutes. Please be cool, be cordial, and don't take up more than three minutes, or else I'll have to ask you to stop talking. That's uncomfortable. So we'll start with Gail Benton Shoemaker, Teresa Dyer, and Deidra Crowe.
Hello, my name is Gail Benton Shoemaker, and I'm a member of a citizens group called Tree City Pacifica. We are thrilled that Pacifica has been named a Tree City USA, and we're looking forward to the mayor presenting the plaque later tonight during council communications. Trees beautify our city, they improve property values, and most importantly, they combat climate change by sequestering and storing carbon. In a city suffering from the consequences of climate change, trees become all the more essential. The city's heritage tree ordinance and care ordinance, budget for maintaining trees, and the wonderful Arbor Day proclamation that the city council approved, were part of the pieces of getting this Tree City USA recognition. There were two other parts, having a tree board and also having an Arbor Day, and Tree City Pacifica was happy to serve as the tree board and organize the Arbor Day celebration required for this designation. We would like to thank the Public Works Department very much, the Pacifica School District, the city council, and citizens groups that made Arbor Day possible. Among over 70 volunteers were Girl Scouts and Brownies, 4-H members, Oceana High School students, an AmeriCorps team from the NCCC, and members of Valamar Conservators. The Beach Coalition, Pacific Beach Coalition generously lent shovels and other equipment, and members of Tree City Pacifica demonstrated how to plant trees and led Arbor Day's activities. Tree City Pacifica is an amazing group of volunteers. Tonight, here with me is also Jeff Moroso and Paul Toda. To maintain the Tree City USA designation, it is required to have an annual Arbor Day celebration. The city council's Arbor Day proclamation declares that the second Saturday in November is Pacifica's Arbor Day. Tree City Pacifica looks forward to the 2020 Arbor Day on November 14th, and we hope that many Pacificans will join us in planting and celebrating trees. Thank you.
Gail? Tree Steyer, Deidra Crowe, and Mike Mooney.
Good evening, City Council and staff. I'm here to speak on three different issues. I'm so glad that Caltrans was here, because one of my issues is the road that goes behind the Moose Lodge there. There is no line in between, and there's going to be an accident waiting to happen. And I know that we don't have anybody here on the Transportation Authority or anything to speak up, so I hope they're still here to hear what I have to say. I mean, it's just terrible because the cars are parked on both sides going to Maury's Point, and the people that are coming from the Moose Lodge that are trying to get out on the highway, they're caught in between the two. Now, I spoke to one of your people, employers here, and they said the problem is that they need to widen that road, and they've got plenty of room to do it. So you might write a letter and advise them on that. The next issue that I have is, I haven't heard too much about the ballot, November ballot going for the library recommendations, but I think you need to be more explicit to the public, because $26 per $1,000 assessment, let's run that down a little bit, and how much is that going to cost the seniors who can't afford to live here anymore anyway? According to the resource center, most of us belong in the poverty area, you know, $24,000? Yeah, you got it. We're ready for food stamps. So that's the other thing. The other thing I want to talk about is the bees, the bumblebees. And nobody should have to pay $216 for a permit to have beehives. Let me tell you, we should encourage them because they're, you know, with the drought and everything, we lost a lot of them. We, I used to have beehives at one time. I got 50 gallons of, or 50 pounds of honey at one time, and it's the best food you could ever eat, you know? But Mike Mooney's going to talk on that, so I'll leave it at that. But when you pass the ordinance, please do not penalize people for having a beehive.
Thank you. Deidra Crowe, Mike Mooney, and Tiger Big Stick is the last card I have.
Good evening. My name is Deidra Crowe, and I've called Pacifica my hometown since 1954. I'm here, as usual, for another car 1409 update. This was the car that ran through Pacifica in 1909 to 1920, and was a passenger car, and we've moved it successfully from the water treatment plant up to, next door to Guerrero's Taqueria. It was quite an event, and we have videotaped it, and we're going to provide that video as part of our entertainment for an upcoming fundraiser. We have Saturday, February 29th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at the Coastside Museum, Pacifica Coastside Museum. It'll also include dinner, a silent auction, music by the Ocean Shore Railroad Band, who plays at Chit Chat Cafe, and we're also providing tickets on Brown Bag, tickets at our website, PacificaHistory.org. The tickets are also available at the museum bookstore, which is open Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00. And we also have tickets at Prince Old and Rare, which is at 580 Cresby Drive, Suite M. And those tickets are reasonably priced, and it'll be a lovely event Saturday night for, as a fundraiser, and lots of fun. We're going to have Kevin Ramsey from the Sharp Park Restaurant providing dinner, and we have a video of the train move, as well as all kinds of other things, like a silent auction, and a variety of wonderful things to have. We, in the process of the train move, we did have some damage to the private road behind the Valamar Station, and that's been since repaired. We, at over $700, ouch. But anyway, the hole in the road is all fixed now, so it's a safer place to drive, and our train is well on its way to restoration. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Deidra. Mike Mooney and Tiger Big Stick.
Name is Mike Mooney, 1009 Everglades Pacifica, 50-year resident. Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for allowing me to get my two cents in on this bee, bee problem. It's not really a problem. The Herald magazine, it says here, bumblebees in trouble, in dire trouble. Well, it's not all man-made, but we can help. After I read the article in last week's Tribune, I agree with all the people who have her in pot. The bees provide our source of living. We have people who are concerned about the red-legged frog and the San Francisco garter snake. That's fine, but they don't contribute to our livelihood. So all the more reason we should be concerned about doing something for the bees. The bees need a habitat, like most people. They need a place to go and hide and make honey, right? So, I was reading about $216 for a permit. Don't make it hard for people to build a honeybee. Now, I'm also speaking from experience. I have noticed this long, long before most people even spoke about it. I developed a liberty garden down at the Colorado Creek 19 years ago. That's a long time. I'm there three, six, seven days a week, three hours a week, and I see the bumblebee. I saw the bumblebee. I saw them decline, and there wasn't much I could do about it, except maybe I might have, I might have set the ball rolling, but I put a little sign on a rock down there, and the sign said, "Be aware." So maybe that's what got people interested. Don't do something. Doing nothing doesn't, doesn't get anywhere. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Tiger Big Stick, that's my last card, if anyone has anything else.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Tiger Jazz Twirl's Big Stick of Pacifica. Lately, I've been giving you updates about the situation in my workplace, since it's one of the biggest employers in Pacifica. And tonight, as I was listening to the gentleman from Samtrans, he used this term "operator shortage" quite a bit, and I was thinking about the operator shortage in my Safeway store where I work. And as I look around every day, my contention, day after day, moment after moment, as my lines build, and I seem to have nobody to call to open up, to shorten those lines, is, well, gee, if the company paid us something that vaguely resembled a livable wage, then maybe people would work here and do this kind of job because they'd be getting paid money with which they could then do something with their life. But I know what lately we've been paid and how long it's been since we've gotten a raise, and I've noticed the cost of living. My own situation is such that currently, I live with three roommates, two of whom work at Safeway, who also cannot afford something as simple as a studio or a one-bedroom apartment. Good luck finding one in town, and if you do... Good luck finding one in town, and if you do, good luck paying that on a Safeway wage. It hasn't been happening for the three of us in our house, and of course, we are also joined by another individual who is a low-income-earning person. So that's my experience with trying to find a place to live on what Safeway's currently offering. So we had a rally last Tuesday in front of the Belmont Store. A lot of people turned up, had to have at least, I don't know, it felt like a couple hundred. All the county supervisors showed up except for one, a couple of the folks running for Jerry, Jerry Hill's California Senate seat showed up, notably Shelley Meiser, and, and a representative from Jerry Hill's office showed up as well, so it was really nice to see a lot of representation from governance there. And it was looking promising for a few days thereafter. We'd actually canceled last Friday's rally accordingly, and they were negotiating apparently arduously through the weekend. Today, I was messaging back and forth a lot with my union representative to figure out if we were rallying tomorrow, since the last one was called off. We are rallying tomorrow. Not enough progress has been made, apparently, so there was hope, and now I know where I'll be next Friday at the rally and tomorrow. Unfortunately, I have a meeting, but I'm sure plenty of people will be showing up to the store in Oakland to tell the company that they'd really like to be able to live here because no one's going to be trucking in three hours to be able to go to their job. So that's the update so far. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
That's the last card I have. If no one has anything else, we will move on to Council Communications. Any red lights here?
Check my tone.
To Vaterlos.
Okay. I went to the City and County Association of Governments, two meetings. The legislative meeting, most notably, we talked about SB 50, which requires, would have required cities to build on transportation corridors. Does not affect Pacifica, but it did not pass. Then the regular City and County Association of Governments projects, we talked about Bike to School, which has been getting larger and larger, and the managed lanes on Highway 101. We had a lot of presentations that night. I went to hear Mullen at the Democrats, and that was interesting. And the people did a straw poll of who they would vote for, and it came out quite different than everybody expected. I also went to the promotion of the police officers. There are four police officers that were promoted, and it was a really nice, quick ceremony. And thank you, everyone. I also went to the Chinese Association of Realtors installation of their officers in San Francisco, and mainly that was about food. So, thanks.
Mary Beer?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight and being civically engaged. It's so, so important. So I've done quite a few things. I attended the Housing Our People Effectively Interagency Council Meeting. There's representatives from housing agencies and different city council members from across the county. And at that meeting, we learned about some of the improvements that have been made at the shelters along the peninsula. We heard from council member Reddy from Redwood City, who reported about the outreach work to the folks in RVs. They have over a hundred RVs in Redwood City right now, so there's a lot of work going on there to try to outreach to folks and get them connected to services. And then Anita Reese from the Pacifica Resource Center also updated the group about the innovative work of the task force, the feasibility study conducted at St. Edmund's, and the possibility of a permit program. And, and people were listening, and people were very proud to hear of the work going on here in Pacifica. So keep that in mind as we move forward. The county's really paying attention. Let's see. I paid a visit to the Pacifica Historical Society to talk a little bit about their use of hobo in their fundraising dinner, and I learned a lot from them. We had a beautiful conversation, and I appreciate their perspective, and so please attend their fundraiser on Saturday, February 29th, at 5:00 p.m. at the Pacifica Coastside Museum. I attended the Joint Articulation Meeting, which is a quarterly meeting with Pacifica School District, Jefferson Union High School District, the city, and North County Water, North House, North, North Coast County Water. And our main discussion was about faculty housing for the school districts. I attended the first half of the Open Space Meeting, which was great because I'd never been there, so I learned a lot. I learned a lot about their Open Space Preservation Awards that are going to be coming up, and we also talked about the local coastal plan. I also attended the Emergency Preparedness Meeting, where there was a presentation from our IT manager, Tommy Yu, who I really appreciate all the work that our IT department has done, not only to protect our emails, but all of the computers and the programs, and they're doing presentations and training around phishing and cyber, what is it called? Phishing and, oh, what, yeah, cybersecurity. Thank you. It was really interesting, and thank you, Tommy, for all of your hard work. We appreciate you. That's it.
Great. Sue Beck-Mayer?
I did a couple meetings, had a couple meetings, and then I did a lot of work with family stuff over the last two weeks, so I'm not quite as active this time. The Economic Development Committee met, and one thing I want to make sure co-council members know is that they're working on a plan for a next-phase celebration for Palmetto and the next phase of the update to that road with bike, the bike racks and benches and things like that. So there'll be more information coming on that. There's a subcommittee working on that, and we'll have more data on that soon. I attended the Pacifica School Volunteers Board Meeting, and they're busy at work planning the Summer Bridge, Think Bridge Program that they do, and coordinating with the city because it's not a full-day program, and so they're coordinating for aftercare. That's an important component for families because if you need care for your child all day, and it's a part-day program, so there's a lot of coordinating going on around that and pre-planning for this coming summer, which is right around the corner. Let's see. Oh, yes, the, the Democrats' meeting with Sue Vaterlos, and Mike was there as well. And, were you there, Mary? I can't remember. No. And it was really enlightening. And then I had an opportunity the following Tuesday to hear a presentation at the Rotary Club from Sherman Frederick, our editor and publisher of the Tribune. So that was, that was my activities this last couple weeks. Thanks.
Thank you. Mike, I know you've got something.
I actually was at a lot of the same meetings, the articulation meeting, the Pacifica Dems meeting. I also attended the board meeting for the Commute.org, and there wasn't really anything of substance, so that's it.
Enough. That's good. Thank you. I wanted to kick off oral, my section of Council Communications, to let everyone know that this evening, we will adjourn in memory of Karen Medina. Karen passed away February 17th, this past Monday. She was a City of Pacifica childcare staff member from April 2014 to present. She worked at the Valamar Childcare location. She was well-liked by her coworkers and the children in her care and her families. She was a favorite teacher of the children, and the children would sit and talk with her for hours. She helped them with their homework. She played cards and games with them. Children would follow Karen around like little ducklings. Her nickname was Care Bear. As many parents expressed how much their children loved Karen, the parents were grateful that their children felt so comfortable in her care. She will be missed dearly by the Valamar staff, children, and families. So tonight, we will adjourn in memory of Karen Medina. I just wanted to remind everyone that Pacific Beach Coalition is doing very heavy planning for Earth Day, so if you don't have plans yet, you can go to their website, sign up to be a site captain, or to volunteer at a location, or sign up for a special project that you'd like to see beautified. Also, thank you to Mary for attending my Open Space Meeting this past week. I was hanging out with family in Philadelphia with my children. And finally, I would like to announce, I'm sure most of you have seen and you heard Gail talk about the press release, that Arbor Day Foundation names the City of Pacifica Tree City USA. This is quite an honor, and I did receive a letter from Dan Lamb, the president, and just want to read a few things that he had said here. "On behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, I write to congratulate Pacifica on earning recognition as a 2019 Tree City USA. Residents of Pacifica should be proud to live in a community that makes the planting and care of trees a priority." He says, "If there ever was a time for trees, now is the time. Communities worldwide are facing issues with air quality, water resources, personal health and well-being, energy use, and protection from extreme heat and flooding. The Arbor Day Foundation recently launched the Time for Trees Initiative to address these issues, with unprecedented goals of planting 100 million trees in forests and communities and inspiring 5 million tree planters by 2022. With Tree City USA recognition, Pacifica has demonstrated a commitment to effective urban forest management and doing its part to help address these challenges for Pacifica residents now and in the future." And for those of you who don't know, the Arbor Day Foundation is a million-member nonprofit conservation education organization with the mission to inspire people to plant, nurture, and celebrate trees. So this is quite a recognition, and with that, we got quite a plaque here as a Tree City USA. I would like to thank Gail, Ben Schumaker, and all of the Tree City folks, there are too many to name, and all the folks who showed up on Arbor Day in November, which Gail has mentioned. It will be every second Saturday in November from, from 2019 on. This year, it will be on November 14th. And just stay tuned for more activities around that. I want to thank the City of Pacifica, who helped follow through with all of the checklist items. I want to thank the city council for supporting the City of Pacifica becoming a Tree City. And with that, I'd like to invite the Tree City Pacifica folks to come up and take a picture with this wonderful plaque. It was exciting. So we will move on to staff communications.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. Council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I want to stick with the theme of awards to begin with because I have actually two award announcements that I'd like to also make. As, as you remember, may remember, recently, the Wastewater Division received a regional award for Best Small Collections System, and we just found out last week that we got first place at the state level from the California Water and Environment Association for the small collections system. So it really speaks to the ingenuity and advancement and improvements over the years that that program has brought to Pacifica and the hard work that they do. So hats off to the collection system, hats off to all the Public Works employees, actually, and everyone in the city. So very pleased about that. Second award I wanted to mention is we also just found out that we will be one of four cities to receive an award from Sustainable San Mateo County for our Reach Codes adoption. We were one of the first four in San Mateo County to adopt, and I believe a press release from Sustainable San Mateo County will be going out tomorrow. I don't have all the details in front of me, but I do know that one of the outcomes of that is there will be a short 60-second video that gets produced that we can use for promotion. So that's an exciting announcement as well. I wanted to mention that we found out late last week that Congresswoman Spear will be doing one of her community days here in Pacifica tomorrow. We had a special meeting notice that we put out tomorrow morning. 10 o'clock to 11 o'clock will be a conversation here in the council chambers with Congresswoman Spear about federal and local, you know, mutual areas of interest. And then the Congresswoman will be heading down to the community center and experiencing the festivities down there, the Congress at Lunch, and talking about the senior center programs. And then I believe she also has on her agenda to visit a couple of the cannabis businesses on Palmetto. So that's all happening tomorrow. And finally, Councilmember Beer had, had mentioned this about the county and focusing on the unhoused and motorhomes particularly. I heard recently from the, the county executive that, you know, that's a priority number one for the county Board of Supervisors. Related to that, the county is going out and interviewing and gathering information from cities about those problems. And last week, I and staff met with representatives from the county and provided them a lot of information about what's happening in Pacifica related to oversized vehicles, our ordinance, the unhoused in Pacifica Task Force, and the germination of a permit parking program that we're working towards. So as Councilmember Beer mentioned, they're, they're very interested in how that's going to all roll forward, so we'll keep them updated. That completes my announcements.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to public hearings. Item number four, we will consider the appeal filed by Joanne Gold regarding the Planning Commission's decision and also a resolution certifying the Post Consult Draft Local Coastal Land Use Plan update. I believe there is a staff report for this one.
I have a process question I want to ask.
Sure.
City attorney?
Oh, hang on one second. You know what? I have to ask before you even ask a question. Does anyone have anything to recuse themselves of?
Oh.
No? Great. You can go ahead and ask your question.
Okay. Key, there's an appeal before us, and as well as this was going to be a regular agenda item. So do we have to have two separate hearings, or can we just combine them all into one, or?
We're, we're combining them all. It's one agenda item. You will hear a staff report from the staff that will cover both the appeal and consideration of the LCLUP. The council will then ask questions of staff, if you have any questions with regard to any part of the staff report. Then, after questions, council will then open it up to the public, open the public hearing. You will first hear comments from the appellant. You will then hear comments from the remainder of the public with regard to any items they want to discuss. It will then come back to the council, and the council will deliberate on both the appeal and consideration of the LCLUP. At that point, the council can determine to take, you know, the appeal first because there will be a motion with regard to the appeal separately, and then following that, there will be a motion and action perhaps on the LCLUP.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on that.
And so a second procedural question. We have comment cards here on item number four. So you get three minutes to talk about item number four. Both of those items are included in item number four. Yes, except for the appellant does get 10 minutes to speak. Okay. So after we get the staff report on item one, uh, 4-1, then we'll have that? No, and 4-2. You will get the staff report for both. Okay. And then we'll open up for hearing? Yes. Okay, thanks. And then you will start the hearing?
And then you will start the hearing with hearing from the appellant first.
Got it. Yeah, but she can also, can the appellant also comment on item number four aside from the 10 minutes?
Yes. Aside from the 10 minutes on the appeal, they have an extra three minutes to comment on the draft LCLUP.
Got it. Okay.
Let me guess, does the appellant, if the appellant wants to reserve rebuttal time, they could do seven and then three?
Yes.
So we should ask the appellant, do you want to have time for rebuttal?
Okay, will you remind me?
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
And the rebuttal time will only be with regard to the appeal, not with regard to the draft LCLUP.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Tina, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, and city council members. As the mayor mentioned, this item before you is the post-consultation draft local coastal land use plan and also consideration of an appeal of the Planning Commission's action. I'm going to provide some background and address the appeal, and then turn the presentation over to Ms. O'Connor to finish up the presentation. The plan before you is the culmination of more than 10 years of planning and community engagement. The city's work to update the LCP and general plan started in 2009, leading up to 2014 draft, which was placed on hold for a variety of reasons. Work resumed on the documents by undertaking a focused sea level rise adaptation planning process from 2017 through 2018, and re-engaging the residents and stakeholders through a public outreach process last year. The 2019 process included five well-attended public meetings held throughout the community. There were three study sessions held by the council and Planning Commission in August and September. The public provided extensive written and verbal comments during these study sessions. And the guidance provided by the city council enabled staff to prepare and transmit a consultation draft to the California Coastal Commission last October as part of the commission's consultation process. Consultation also included an in-person meeting at the Coastal Commission offices and several conference calls. The city received comments from the Coastal Commission last November and then released the consultation draft with the Coastal Commission markup and their comment letter for public review. And the public review period ended at the beginning of January. Following this public comment period, staff prepared a post-consultation draft LCP for Planning Commission consideration and recommendation to city council. Staff revised the post-consultation draft based on the Planning Commission's recommendation. And this draft is what's before you this evening, hopefully for a decision. After the Planning Commission's February 3rd meeting, the city received an appeal filed by Joanne Gold. The appeal seeks consideration, a reconsideration of the action taken by the Planning Commission. The basis for the appeal is an alleged Brown Act violation of inadequate notice. The city attorney's office has reviewed the agenda for the Planning Commission meeting of February 3rd, and the subsequent action of the Planning Commission has determined that there was no violation of the Brown Act, and the city's, city attorney's response was attached to the staff report. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. O'Connor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Martin and council members. I am Associate Planner Bonnie O'Connor. The Pacifica Local Coastal Land Use Plan, or LCLUP, is a policy document for the long-range development of portions of the City of Pacifica within the coastal zone. The coastal zone in Pacifica is comprised of all areas west of Highway 1 and the Shell Dance Nursery area located east of Highway 1. The LCLUP is sometimes referred to as the LCP or Local Coastal Program. However, an LCP is actually made up of two parts, the LCLUP, which is under consideration this evening, and the Implementation Plan, or IP, which is made up of zoning ordinances and other activities which implement the policies of the LCLUP. Combine the city's LCLUP and IP form the certified LCP, which allows the city to assume permitting authority for development in most areas of the coastal zone in Pacifica. As Ms. Wermeyer provided the background of where we are today, staff did prepare a post-consultation draft LCLUP for Planning Commission's consideration, which shows the red line edits from the consultation draft LCLUP. One area of ongoing work to resolve with the different viewpoints between the city and the Coastal Commission relates to the treatment of sites which contain existing development. In response to both the Coastal Commission's staff and the public's request for a clear understanding of what the city would consider an existing structure and new development in relation to the coastal resilience policies and redevelopment fits in, staff developed and defined the term substantial exterior structural modification, or SESM. The SESM term allows the city to differentiate between the existing structures and development that would be considered a SESM. For example, maintenance work to an existing structure such as a re-roof or window replacement or demolition of an existing structure with the replacement, with the replacement with a structure of similar size and location would be considered an existing structure. Whereas alterations to an existing structure that would increase the building footprint more than 50% or encroach in a seaward direction would be considered a SESM. Policy CRI 49 on page 340 was amended to describe that development considered to be a SESM would have to be built consistent with the LCP. However, the policies applicable to the SESM would not be applied to the portions of the structure that are considered an existing structure. Additional revisions to policy CRI 56 on page 342, CRI 58 on page 343, and definitions of the existing structure on page 375 and new development on page 378 were made to incorporate the term SESM. Importantly, these policies and definitions use the certification date of this LCLUP as the reference point for existing structures and modifications to existing structures. Further revisions were made to the post-consultation draft LCLUP based on Planning Commission and public comments provided at or prior to two public hearings held on January 21st and February 3rd. Following the public hearings that held, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution recommending the city council to certify the LCLUP is intended to be carried out in a manner fully in conformity with the California Coastal Act and to transmit the document to the Coastal Commission for certification. Coastal Commission staff submitted a letter on the post-consultation draft LCLUP after the Planning Commission's action but before publication of the agenda packet for this meeting, which is provided in attachment of tonight's report. As fully expressed in their letter, the Coastal Commission staff continues to have outstanding comments on the Planning Commission's recommended post-consultation draft LCLUP. While staff, while city staff believes it may ultimately be appropriate to incorporate some of the comments, other comments highlight the continued differences of opinion which remain between the two agencies. Most notably, city staff believes Coastal Commission staff has ignored important policies in the Coastal Act, which supports Pacifica's desire to protect existing development and allow new development and redevelopment clustered in already developed areas. As a result, city staff believes that the post-consultation draft LCLUP is consistent with the Coastal Act, and staff plans to continue to advocate for the city's LCLUP throughout the certification process. During the LCLUP process, four private property owners' requests were received and considered by staff. All four requests are more fully discussed in the January 21st, 2020 Planning Commission staff report in attachment L. Changes were made to the post-consultation draft LCLUP in response to only two of the requests. The first change was for 184 Paloma Avenue to maintain a commercial land use designation in support of the property owner's existing application for a mixed-use development, which would have been inconsistent with the residential land use designation proposed in an earlier draft of the LCLUP. The second change was made as a result of the property owner of the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue site requesting more clarification of the land use policies directly related to their property. Staff proposed edits to clarify that residential use was only permitted on the site with commercial use and that the detached residential uses were permissible as part of an overall mixed-use project. The Planning Commission accepted the revisions to the coastal residential mixed-use land use designation as proposed by staff, but recommended for the revisions to policy LDI 20 to clarify that residential uses must be attached to commercial uses either vertically or horizontally. Staff has prepared this item for council consideration this evening for the purpose of seeking council's approval of the post-consultation draft LCLUP and transmittal of the document to the Coastal Commission for certification. Under the scenario that the council adopts tonight's recommended resolution, the next step would include staff accepting all approved revisions to the post-consultation draft LCLUP and retitling the document to be a certification draft LCLUP. The certification draft LCLUP would be sent to the Coastal Commission for review and certification. The Coastal Commission has 90 days with the potential of an additional 12-month extension to certify, certify with suggested modifications, or deny the certification draft LCLUP. Depending on the Coastal Commission's action, the plan may be required to return to the Planning Commission and city council for further consideration. After publication of tonight's staff report, four additional letters were received by staff and have been distributed to the city council and are available to the public in the back of the room. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the attached resolution and direct staff to submit the LCLUP to the Coastal Commission for certification. Staff and Commissioner Liaison Berman are present and available to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. So, does council have any questions of staff first? A million. Do you want to wait? Or do you want to, okay. So I should open the public hearing then, and I will receive public testimony first? Or the appellant?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, from the appellant first.
First?
From the appellant first, and then the rest of the public.
Okay. These instructions are backwards, just FYI. I'll make a little edit here. Okay, so, is it Allison?
Yeah.
Joanne.
No, because she gets it.
So it's up to you guys. You have 10 minutes, and you can split that time, but you have 10 minutes total, and if you want to reserve some of that time...
Three minutes for rebuttal. Now, just to keep in mind that the 10 minutes is related solely to the appeal, so if you would like to talk about the draft LCLUP, just make that known, and you will get an additional three minutes.
Okay. I didn't plan all that much time to talk, so...
Okay.
Good news for everybody. And I already actually did submit some of my responses in writing, but if some of you are like me and take in information better by spoken word, I'm going to read from some of the letter I already submitted. And I understand that the Brown Act appeal I filed has been denied and rejected. I do want to clarify that the reason I filed the appeal on behalf of and with the financial support of 20 of my Pedro Point neighbors, it was not because we're all sticklers for the Brown Act procedural law. It was because we were opposed to and shocked by the actions of the city planning staff who made substantive changes to the LCLUP related to the Calson Pedro Point field following a private meeting with the landowner just hours before the February 3rd Planning Commission meeting. City planning staff then wrongly characterized the revisions as mere clarifications, but to the contrary, the edits that were cited in our appeal were substantive and added considerable leeway to expand CRMU land use definitions and adding greater opportunity for residential development on this very environmentally sensitive parcel. But because these revisions were conducted in such a backdoor manner, we had no opportunity to review the edits in advance and challenge them during the meeting. Therefore, the edits were voted on and approved by the Planning Commissioners wholesale. Since the time that the general plan update process began nearly 10 years ago, most of you know that I and the majority of my Pedro Point residents have written to and/or come before this council to strongly object to any type of residential land use for the Pedro Point Calson field, including CRMU. And for the record, the current 1980 general plan describes the designated land use for this field as "commercial" with emphasis on coastal-related and visitor-serving uses. But for years, we've heard members of the city staff and the city council rebuff our objections, often citing the rights of the property owner and saying that the proposed CRMU is closest to the field's current commercial recreational designation, which already allows for some form of residential development. This is just not accurate. During the important LCLUP and general plan update process, it's your responsibility to make land use decisions about this parcel based on its current state and environmental conditions, and to consider any impacts before making changes to the current land use designation. To be clear, the current state of the field is, and has been since well before the Calsons purchased this property in the 1980s, it is an undeveloped open space. It is a seasonal wetland habitat. It is a flood plain for runoff from the surrounding area. It is an access point to Lindemar Beach. It is a natural open space that has been enjoyed by the community for more than half a century. Therefore, the actual closest land use designation to the current state of the field would be conservation, followed closely by low-intensity visitor-serving commercial, not CRMU. And any land use changes to this baseline must only be made in consideration of foreseeable impacts and the best interest of the community. Scores of Pacifica residents have gone on record citing numerous foreseeable negative impacts that would be caused by any proposed changes to the current state of the field, including changes to the neighborhood's historic character, elimination of wildlife habitat, increased parking and traffic hazards blocking access by emergency vehicles, and most importantly, undeniable increased climate change hazards in the foreseeable future, including sea level rise, flooding from severe storm runoff, and coastal storm surge, all of which present negative impacts for residents, not to mention potential liability for the city. Yet despite years of presenting data and testimony to support these negative impacts from geological and environmental experts, documented conflicts with coastal act policy, and overwhelming neighborhood opposition to proposed residential land use of the field, the city council has demonstrated consistent and unabashed historical bias in the interests of the private landowners above all else. In continually voting to accept the proposed CRMU land use designation and show prejudice to the property owners, you are sacrificing a sensitive environmental coastal asset and diminishing the vision for the future of our city as a visitor-serving destination. I sincerely hope you will not let this be your legacy. I also want to note that after submitting this letter, I received a message from a city council member asking if I had ever heard of the term "taking." I assume it's because they themselves might not have a clear understanding, so I can explain it. A take is when a government regulation infringes upon private property ownership to such an extent that it causes the loss of all economically beneficial or productive uses of the land and can be considered a taking, thus requiring compensation. In the case of the Calson field, the low-intensity visitor-serving commercial designation does not cause the loss of all economically beneficial productive uses of the land and is actually closest to the current land use designation of commercial recreation. So a taking does not apply, and I can't say the same would happen if the city backs itself into a corner by changing the designation to CRMU. I hope that clarifies it. That is all I had prepared to say, and I can give the rest of my time to my neighbor, Allison West. Would that be now?
Good evening. I won't repeat all the things that Joanne said, but I do want to add something about the Brown Act. And again, we're not here to nitpick, but the reality is, when we attended the meeting by the Planning Commission, and we were told there was an addendum in the back of the room, and we looked at it, and we were so shocked because the Brown Act requires that you notify, right, the public. Government Code Section 54954.2 sub-A provides a brief general description of each item of business to be transacted or discussed. The agenda simply stated "consideration of draft local coastal plan, coastal land use plan of local coastal program recommendation by city council." So needless to say, we were shocked when it went from being a, you know, attached residential commercial recommendation to detached. And my view was, what were we going to see? We were going to see the Calsons put a little 5-by-10 unit at the back of the field, and the whole rest was going to be residential. And to say that this was not significant, and to say that this was a clarification, for us as citizens, it just was simply unconscionable. It was shocking to us. It was shocking to us. You have council, she is your defense attorney. I am a former defense attorney. I get your role. Just because she said there's no Brown Act violation does not mean that there was no Brown Act violation. We were not given notice of significant changes. Had we not been there, guess what would have been in the record? It would be detached, and it would have changed the entire flavor of what you're trying to do, which we oppose anyway. So, I want to ask you as council members, who do you want to be? Do you want to be able to make these changes and not give the public an opportunity? It's part of the coastal act that you let us come and hear and talk with you and give our opinion about it. And to do these meetings on the same day as the meeting, you know, the public meeting in the evening, I think Pacifica is better than that. I'm not faulting you. You don't wake up every morning, Christian, thinking you're going to hurt us. But the reality is, it is hurting the residents of Pacifica. I also want to make a comment that the coastal commission had sent us an email, and they said, "This property is in the coastal combining zone in which visitor-serving uses are prioritized, and as such, that should be the guide for any future development." We don't hear that. We have been discarded with our opinions, and I think it's important for you all to understand what some of us have been the recipient of. And I will save that for my next three minutes because I do want to talk. So, will you add to this, or how do you want to do that? Like, I don't understand how you're... We want rebuttal time, so I'm...
It's only related to the appeal. So, how much time is left?
We have a minute 11.
You have one minute. You could reserve that for rebuttal.
We'll reserve that for rebuttal, and then I'll come back for my other three. Or do you want me to stand here for three more?
It's up to you.
I'm here. I'll do three.
It's up to the mayor.
What do you want?
So, you're the first card anyway, so you can go ahead and give your three minutes on the LCLUP.
Mayor Martin, I was very pleased that in the beginning you mentioned, you know, for people to be cordial. My neighbor Joanne had mentioned something about getting an email regarding, "What is a taking?" It pains me, it is not comfortable for me to highlight that Sue Vaderlos has an incredible bias against the residents of Pedro Point. Her disdain for us is palpable in her emails. I was shocked at emails that she had written to me last year. You all serve the public, you serve us, and all of you have been so courteous to us, even if you completely disagree with us. Mike met with one of our colleagues, I mean neighbors, completely professional, appropriate. We believe that that bias is permeating in what's going on, and we're asking for courtesy. And there's, we're not your enemy. We want you to listen to us, even if you disagree with us. We are your constituents. Regarding the taking, it is simply disingenuous to say this. It is a false narrative. Wow, we heard that a lot in the news. You have to stop telling us, Sue, that we say we want nothing. You said in your email to Joanne today, "The Calsons want more and you want nothing." That is disingenuous. Recall that the Pedro Point community has proposed alternatives to residential development of the Calson field, so it is on record that we have not opposed anything, anytime, anywhere. What we don't want is what you're proposing with the type of change to the land use designation, and we want to be able to work with the community to have something where the city to make it manageable for our environment. It is, we've hosted meetings, we've invited you to see our community, so we need you to stop telling us that we're not, that we don't want anything because that isn't the truth. The taking, again, is totally unconscionable. That is not what we have said. That is not what the city is doing. It is not a taking. So, if you're going to use things that threaten us and threaten the community, then use the right language. So, Joanne already gave you the information from that. So, with that, please listen to the community. We have one egress, we have one ingress and egress out of the community. It's a flood zone. We've given you all the information you need back in 2014. What's going to ultimately happen is you are pitting citizens against the community. You are creating tremendous liability because at some point, we are going to have no choice but to take legal action as each step goes on, and you are wasting city resources. And so, listen to us, meet with us, and talk with us about what's going to be best in Pedro Point. Thank you.
Thanks, Allison. I've got Victor Carmichael. I've got Victor Carmichael, Tim Blanchard, and Richard Harris.
I have more of a general overview and not specifically addressing any particular issue relative to some, something that may be unpleasant to some residents and possibly an outrage. What I want to talk about is just a general, I would like, I would, while I want, I would prefer a local coastal land use plan that more fully addresses the sea level rise with triggers for action appropriate to the seriousness of a given situation and that provides for other alternatives rather than simply, "I hire sea walls, more rocks, and expansive sand replacement." Nevertheless, I hope the city council will go along and move this version of the plan forward. What's confusing me is you've tangled up two issues together and then thrown me in here with my generalized overview of the local coastal plan process. And I think that's unfair to all of us. But anyway, I'll move forward with my presentation. The version that's before us concerns the concerns of the homeowners in the coastal zone who believed that the original version administratively devalued their property. There is almost no mention of managed retreat in the entire document. Wouldn't it be more logical to simply stop building in the coastal zone in the first place? The coastal zone can no longer be simply seen as valuable real estate. It was almost always part, it has always been part of an active geological process and only temporarily available for habitation. Now, that fact is being hammered home by sea level rise. Much of the coastal zone is now in the same category as the East Coast Berry Islands, ground zero for sea level rise, and almost only, and only a matter of time before insurance underwriters, regardless of what we put in the politically-driven documents, write it down as valuable. I'm sure the coastal commission prefers the coastal cities build other approaches into their local coastal plans other than simply limitless and probably futile fortifications against a rising sea. And judging from the latest news from scientists studying the polar regions, including Greenland, ice packs and the glaciers are melting faster than predicted. In a couple of weeks ago, a research action, a research station in Antarctica reported a temperature of 64.9 degrees Fahrenheit. Whatever happens, we will certainly have a front-row seat. The underlying question for all of us here is, has there ever been enough money to pay for all the revampment and sand required? If this thing unfolds as expected, we'll be in competition for funds for the entire San Francisco Bay coastline as well as the rest of the developed coast of the state.
Victor? Sorry. Got to cut you off. Thanks. Tim Blanchard, Richard Harris, Jeff Guyer.
Good evening, city council, mayor. Really comes down to, I hope you'll think about the poor folks that live west of Highway 1 and keep managed retreat out. We're taxpayers. Children go to school here. I hope you'll think about us a little bit when you make this decision. Thank you.
You. Richard Harris, Jeff Guyer, and Rob Verdoe, Verlo?
Good evening, council. I am Richard Harris. I'm speaking for the San Francisco Public Golf Alliance. We have 6,500 members, 700 of whom live in Pacifica. We've given you a detailed letter, starting at your packet page 850 through 865. We talk about a couple of issues that the council has previously addressed and given specific language on. The first one is the problematic cost-benefit analysis. The council dealt with that on September 30, put some disclaimer language in the draft to be sent on to the coastal commission. That disclaimer language is not included in the current draft. Only a part of it is included. It's been paraphrased and has been paraphrased incorrectly. The disclaimer language, and I've set forth this argument at packet page 850 through 853. At packet page 849, we show you the disclaimer language that we request, which was a quote from the disclaimer language that you adopted on September 30. There is a second point, the environmental justice point. The environmental justice point is very pertinent to Pacifica. You have affordable housing immediately protected by the sea walls in the, west of the highway. At packet pages 850 through 853, we request very specific language to incorporate the goals for the draft of local land use plan, which was adopted by the city council on March 26, 2018. Those are precisely consistent with the coastal commission's environmental justice policy. And I've cited in the letter the places where they are consistent. There is great protection for affordable housing, and that's what you have in these local, west of the coastal highway. It is protected by the sea walls. And it is important to designate that as environmental justice. Thank you very much. I've set forth my letter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Jeff Guyer, Rob Verlo, and Suzanne Drake.
Good evening, council and staff. Jeff Guyer, 27-year resident, West Fairway Park, a third of a mile from the beach and 44 feet above sea level, but I'm in the coastal zone, so this very much applies to me. And this, I got involved with this in August, what, 2018, 19? It's a year and a half over that, and it's been a real experience. So, can't say the best, but it's been an experience. One of the issues that I've had from the beginning is that the language is not specific enough, and there are too many areas that are open for interpretation. And I've seen that get shored up a lot within the document, and I really appreciate what staff has done, especially with development, the terms of development and redevelopment. That has been hammered really well. I think it's well-defined. I appreciate the work that went into that. One of the aspects that we had talked about was repairing the sea wall. And actually, before I go on to that, I want to mention, we've heard a number of people just talking about Calson Field, right? And this has been a deal that's been going on for, I don't know, 20 years longer than that, right? And it seems like that's happened, we're in this state now because we aren't clear on our language. There's so many open interpretations on what it is, nobody knows what the heck it is. So, I would like to use this opportunity to make sure we're very clear on a document that's supposed to last 30, 40 years, that we spend the time, make sure that it's good. Okay? Now, regarding the sea level, or the sea wall, there's been talk about that, there's been a discussion about whether or not, I think that council's intent and the city's intent is to rebuild that sea wall. And that, because it wasn't built correctly in the first place, or it was temporary, whatever, and it should be rebuilt as a proper sea wall. I'd like to know what the city's real intention is on that because the LCP, as it stands right now, LCLUP, in CRI 564 says, "Activities considered," in quotes, "repair and maintenance shall not result in any enlargement or extension of the shoreline protection structure." But in other parts of the document, we talk about rebuilding it and extending it to the burn. What are we doing? It's a simple question. I just would love to get an answer on that, and that we get the document, the plan for the next 30, 40 years to meet what it is we intend to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Rob?
Verco.
Verco. I can't see that as a C. Verco?
To participate in it.
All right. Rob Verco, Suzanne Drake, and Cherie Chan.
So, thank you. Hi, my name is Rob Verco, honorable mayor and council members and planning commission. Thank you for attending today. It's good to see you all. I'm going to read from a letter so I can be really focused and hopefully crank this out before the three minutes is up. "My family and I recently moved to Pacifica's Pedro Point neighborhood largely because of the 1980 general plan." Yes, because of the 1980 general plan. "And because of the charming character of the Pedro Point neighborhood and our love for the nature, who can't beat, everybody has a beautiful view in this city. The 1980 general plan's vision that was put forth by city leaders for Pacifica and the Pedro Point neighborhood conveyed thoughtful and purposeful planning strategy that would balance the character of our neighborhood and the city with the need to develop and develop a low-density visitor servicing space in Pedro Point. This gave us the confidence that there was long-term planning in our approach and scaled growth while preserving the unique character of our neighborhood as well as the city. So much confidence, in fact, we decided to buy a home and join the community. When we learned about the proposed changes for zoning in our neighborhood, as well as throughout the city, we became a bit concerned, especially given the thoughtful consideration in 1980 plan, the new plans, especially those where we now are saying CRMU coupled with horizontal recommendations, appear to be a bit capricious and without environmental decision, and I am sure that's not the case, but we'd like to see otherwise. The New York Times, San Francisco Chronicle, and the LA Times have all documented the impact of climate change in our neighborhood and the need to make wise development decisions to prevent a further loss of property as well as people's livelihoods. The Pedro Point sits, the Pedro Point property sits in a tsunami, flood, and fire zone and lacks needful infrastructure to safely support a CRMU development in this neighborhood. The optics alone of placing those who are in need of more access and opportunity, e.g. people who might need low-income housing or other services, in a place in such an inopportune location really makes me pause and ask why. Furthermore, environmental studies are required to inform how and what we do to build on the property to align with the current zoning and determine if the property is best suited for conservation versus development. The proposal to change the current low-density visitor servicing to CRMU at the Pedro Point property, we see as an irresponsible decision by our city staff. We agree that our city and region require more affordable housing. However, we hear that the planning staff's recommendation in the property owner's position that this is a great opportunity for low-income housing. However, the ecology in the site disagrees. Changing the zoning is shorthanded and malformed position that has the potential to put the very people that the staffers and property owners wish to help at risk, and I ask why. We at minimum request that this remain low visitor servicing as it's currently designed. Thank you."
Thank you, Rob. Suzanne, Cherie, and Marcia Settle.
Thank you, council, as well as staff, on shoring up some of that language with regard to vocabulary words, building, structure, so forth. So, thank you for dealing with that from the last time. However, going back to some of Jeff Guyer's comments with regard to the sea wall here, certainly, we all know that the city is pretty broke. We do need to develop this particular area as an economic stability for Pacifica. We're not going to do that without selling this property over here. And we're not going to sell this property over here unless we kind of guarantee, to a certain extent, the interest of the city to protect this particular area and focus on economic viability and visitor serving. Oh, and I'm pro Bees. Go Bees. So, let's just, let's just keep that in mind because there are some holes still left in this document. We really need to make sure that we are very cognizant of who... We really need to make sure that we are very cognizant of who is going to be in receipt of this RFP, request for proposal, for this land, as well as the rest of these opportunities to buy into our community. I noticed on the document here that you have for this particular meeting, I completely forgot about the fact that the city owes a ton of dough to these pensions. So unless we actually are propagating funds from revenue, we're going to have to pay for it as taxpayers. So you can have it one way or the other. You can't have both. So let's go ahead and make sure that this LCP covers this seawall and covers this whole area. Make sure that this is a viable business development, business-friendly community. Let's drive up those tax dollars and leave the taxpayers alone for a while. Thank you.
Thanks. Shree, Marcia, and Sam Cassius.
Hi, the council members, staff, thank you for all your hard work and your service and volunteering to make all these really tough decisions. Section three thousand and six of the Coastal Act states that the public has a right to fully participate in decisions affecting coastal planning, conservation, and development. And development should include the widest opportunity for public participation. But why we're before you is that public participation needs to actually mean something, and we need to feel heard. I bought my house on San Pedro Avenue in two thousand nine. Before buying my house, I called the planning department, and they assured me that the large vacant lot across the street from the field had been owned by the Catholic Church, had been a golf driving range, and was designated for commercial visitor-serving recreational uses. And that is the knowledge that I used in order to buy my house, because I wanted this balanced, diverse neighborhood, and that's what drew me to Pedro Point in the first place. Since then, I've attended nearly every GPU and PPCA meeting since. Throughout that time, Pacifica's citizens have steadfastly opposed the change in land use designation from visitor-serving recreation to whatever flavor of the month residential development is presented with us on whatever day. Yet, the planning staff has asked you guys as council members to sign two resolutions. One, rejecting Joanne Gold's Brown Act violation out of hand. Joanne and Allison, you spoke so eloquently to that point, and I have nothing more to add, but I was at that meeting and questioned, and I was also shocked. I do work for staff, as staff myself, for a regulatory agency, and it's one that Jerry Hill always makes fun of for regulatory capture. And honestly, I think I would have been fired for violating due process in a backdoor meeting the morning before some commissioners meet. The other resolution you're asked to sign is that you're asked to sign something that certifies that the LCLUP is intended to be carried out in a manner that is fully in conformity with the Coastal Act. And you and I both know that that is not true. It's not in conformity with the Coastal Act. I've written fifteen pages explaining to you why, in detail, all my neighbors have. And number two, you're expected to find that approval of the LCLUP is exempt from this California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. We all know that the proposed LCLUP is not even close of full conformity with the Coastal Act. And under CEQA, the city is required to conduct its own environmental review for discretionary approvals that the city will consider for this project, and this is very much a discretionary act. It is a change to the land use and the expectations that we had when we moved into Pedro Point, and it will fundamentally destroy the character and access, not only for us, but everyone who wants to enjoy the best boogie boarding, family-friendly beach in the Bay Area. And that's what we hear. Thank you.
Thanks, Shree. Marcia, Sam Cassius, and Joanne Gold.
Thank you. My name's Marcia Settle, and I've lived on Pedro Point for thirty-four years. So I've seen a lot of change. On my street alone, there are thirteen houses that were not there when I moved in. So I'm used to change. I moved in when the Kelson Field was still, belonged to the Catholic Church, and so I still in my brain call it the diocese property. I don't want to repeat the arguments that have been so eloquently made in letters from the community to the city council and the coastal commission over the last period of time. What I decide to talk about is the fact that during the last election for city council, we held a candidates forum at the firehouse. I moderated it as president of the PPCA. One of the questions that was raised was about the general plan update. And every candidate on that podium said, yes, it is important that the community be involved in any decisions made, and was not specific about the field, but any updates to the plan would involve the community input. You've gotten our input. Getting our input is not enough. Listening to the input is what is important. It's not just sort of process, but it's what the end of that process is. Three of the five of you were there at that meeting, and I hope you remember what you said to us in making your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Sam Cassius, Joanne Gold, and Margaret Goodell.
Good evening, city council and planning commission. And believe me, we really appreciate the hard work that you all are doing, and this can't be easy. We know that, and we appreciate it. But to that point, it was a little ironic that the planning commission meeting that was held a month ago, that the first item was an emergency permit for a house that was falling into the ocean. And yet, here we keep going along, with the city continuing to ignore climate change science in regards to flooding, tsunami, coastal erosion, and wetland hazard zones in the LCP process. Not only that, the city continues to avoid the coastal commission requirement for a full managed retreat plan that also requires annual reviews of hazard conditions. To our neighbors and the citizens here in the Faramon area, we feel for you, but the fact is that Sam Carr is lying to you, and so are their people. If we don't have a viable managed retreat plan, we will not receive any grants from any agency, and we will be taxed to the tune of more than two-hundred million dollars to try to protect anything. And who's going to vote for that if we don't work together? And who's going to abandon you? Sam Carr will abandon you at that time, trust me. Additionally, I just started looking through the updated State of California Natural Resource Agency safeguarding California, and it now references state law SB three seventy-nine. And within there, the document states that we are to identify natural infrastructure that may be used for projects where feasible. The plan shall use existing ecosystems and/or the restoration of natural features. Natural infrastructure means floodplains and wetlands restoration. And here we go. Pedro Point, wetland, is what it is and what it was until it was illegally drained without a permit from both the city and the Kelson owners. And that was done, and it's been documented. So if it wasn't ditched, it would still be a wetland. But the law now states in SB three seventy-nine that it needs to be restored, and you need to be using infrastructure for that. We also have a lot of other places that need to adhere to this. The Fish and Bull property, that's just a water basin runoff if you want, build there as well. The quarry, that should also be mandated for flooding pressure as SB three seventy-nine states. The Rockaway Headlands, that's major bluff erosion. And then, of course, what we've been talking about, which is the Pedro Point wetlands, also known as the Kelson Field. So to that, it's time to start listening to your citizens, and it's time to start listening to science versus Sam Carr people who are just interested in real estate. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Joanne, Margaret, and Stan Zieven.
I actually, I wrote a card, because I didn't know I was going to have ten minutes, so I don't really have anything to say, other than I do want to add that I wholeheartedly believe in what Marcia just said, and I'm hoping that you will not just hear us, but take in our information, listen to it. And also, I want to echo what Allison said. We really do want to work with you. We want to work with the city, and we want what's best for the city of Pacifica, to enrich the city. It is not about our own backyard. It is not about keeping things out. It's what we bring in and what the vision for Pacifica can and should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Goodell, Stan Zieven, and Dan Sedgink.
Good evening, council. I'm Margaret Goodell, Pacifica resident. I'm here to address managed retreat. The new LCLUP says the city has rejected managed retreat as a sea level rise adaptation policy in this LCP, and managed retreat could only become the policy of the city subsequent to a future amendment to the LCP. Requiring an amendment to even consider managed retreat ties the city up in knots. It locks us into bureaucratic red tape. It forces inaction. Doing this limits city flexibility. It fails to allow for response to unexpected and unanticipated events. We need to simplify and streamline, not create situations similar to the dangerous, risky hazards that happened in nineteen ninety-six and two thousand sixteen, where emergency retreat resulted in costs to the city and disruptions to lives. Your refusal to plan to manage retreat simply defers planning and leaves the city vulnerable and exposed rather than resilient. As a taxpayer, I want to have reasonable planning that is not limiting the city. Happened today that I ran into a San Diego summary. They said, with so much at stake, it is critical to begin considering policy responses long before the worst impacts associated with sea level rise are projected to occur, because developing and implementing solutions will require unprecedented collaboration with lead times that are long, and because infrastructure is now being looked at that will be vulnerable to impacts in the future. Please consider all of your citizens. Please don't leave a legacy for those of you who may vote to forward this particular version under pressure to the coastal commission. I do hope that anyone who votes tonight to send it in without managed retreat has their name emblazoned on the whole thing for the future Pacificans to see. They will blame you. They will be unhappy. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Stan, Dan Sedgink, Larry Bothan.
Hi, my name is Stan Zieven. I lived in Pacifica for twenty-seven years or so. In my little talk, I'm going to redefine managed retreat as LCLUP response plan, even though that might confuse people. Work with me on this. I believe, as do the county and the CCC in the science of LSR, but it's now obvious it's the politics that's running the direction that the city is taking. Why there isn't a response plan yet in place for future SLR is unbelievable, since both our own county and the CCC have stated that Pacifica can call this response plan whatever it wants. So it's obvious that the name managed retreat isn't the problem. It's the fact that the real estate industry doesn't want any SLR plan in place, and that is where the politics trump science. Science says there should be a response plan in place. The city, by preferring to keep the old nineteen eighty LCP viable rather than incorporating CCC guidelines into a new LCP, could lead to grave consequences. The bottom line to this is twofold. Without a new LCP with a response plan, one, there are less grants available for such things as rebuilding the Beach Boulevard wall. Two, it lowers the chance of Pacifica to remain solvent going into the future. This is not tolerable. More citizens are realizing that our county and CCC care more about Pacifica's future than our own city council. Therefore, some of us have started to bypass the city and are preparing our appeals directly for the CCC as opposed to the deaf ear of the city. Quite frankly, I would probably be more surprised if this LCLUP passes the CCC more than even the city council members would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Larry Bothan, Cheryl Kelson, and, sorry, Dan Sedgink, Larry Bothan, and Cheryl Kelson. Thanks.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for hearing me tonight. It's a little confusing. We have the appeal, folks speak, then fourteen speakers later, another appeal, folks speak. I think I sat through fifteen land use appeals in San Mateo County last year, and I don't think I've ever seen it done that way before. But regardless, I think you guys all know what the supremacy clause is. Basically, it says that federal law, perump state law, and the corollary is that state law perump county, perump city, and there's some overlap city-county there. The idea that there's continued differences in policy between the two agencies almost makes it seem like they're two equal agencies. Pacifica is entirely at the discretion of the coastal commission here. I see a lot of folks here constantly complaining about managed retreat that I've never seen at a single coastal commission meeting in the last three years. I'm just going to go over a couple things here that are, I could speak for six minutes if it had been split. Executive Order N twenty-three twenty, the parcel on the corner of Pedro Point Shopping Center is going to be opened for vacant state land to facilitate emergency shelters for the homeless. That's on the corner of Pedro Point Shopping Center there. The oversized vehicle ordinance cannot be enforced in the coastal zone per the coastal commission. I know you've heard that lately, and I know our city attorney disagrees, but the oversized vehicle ordinance will absolutely not be enforced in Manor. It will absolutely not be enforced in Rockaway. It will absolutely not be enforced in Chart Park, and it will absolutely not be enforced in Pedro Point. What's going to happen at three P.M. every day when all the construction vehicles come home? All the RVs come home, they can't park on the dry side, so they all go over to Pedro Point, to Rockaway, to Manor. Not only that, but you're going to have a group of homeless vehicles that are going to be at the Pedro Point Shopping Center anyway because of that corner parcel that has been executive ordered in as of last week. You know, and some folks in Pedro Point had asked, oh, how should, you know, we don't feel like we got adequate notice here, it's a Brown Act violation. I said, well, why don't you walk it back? Why don't you walk it back to the planning commission and just ask them? Maybe they'll just take another look at it, make it easy for you. And they're like, well, it's five hundred dollars. Like, yeah, well, let's see what they'll do on that. That's not the cure. The cure is the free coastal commission. You have appeal within forty-five days to any planning decision in the coastal zone, still pending, hasn't occurred. And the cure after that is Brown Act violation complaint with county attorney. So there's essentially two other appeals going forth here. The idea that you would combine these into one line item and then vote immediately, take the appeals at the same time, and then combine it into one thing you decide on at the same time, is just not borne out by good policy. Thanks.
Thanks, Dan. Larry Bothan, Cheryl Kelson, and Chris Redfield is my last card, if anyone has any cards.
Good evening. You've got to hear more about the language in the draft plan. That seems to be a theme tonight. And the revised draft of the LCLUP is still not ready to be adopted because it fails to disavow the cost-benefit analysis as laid out by city council in their meeting on September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Council voted unanimously to insert the following disclaimer in the document. Quote, "The cost-benefit analysis section of the adaptation plan is not adopted or approved by the city of Pacifica. The cost-benefit analysis shall not be used for any future purpose by the city of Pacifica or its planning processes." And it goes on. "Without that first sentence, the document has no teeth and would allow the flawed assumptions of the cost-benefit analysis to creep back into planning. It's essential that we use clear, direct language so there could be no misinterpretation of its meaning. The LCLUP should also reaffirm the city's commitment to the environmental justice policies it adopted unanimously in March of two thousand and eighteen. That is, to preserve the existing neighborhoods in the local coastal zone and promote environmental justice and economic vitality." Neither that or the disapproval of the cost-benefit analysis is clearly Neither that or the disapproval of the cost-benefit analysis is clearly spelled out in the draft plan that's being considered tonight. We need to be able to show the Coastal Commission that our goals as a city align with their stated goals. We can't do that without clear, specific, and direct language. If the intent of these omissions is to somehow appease or mollify the Coastal Commission, forget it. It won't work. Vague, ambiguous language in the document can be turned against you in court. I can see a judge asking, if this is your intent, why doesn't it say that in the document? In March 2019, the Coastal Commission adopted an environmental justice policy with these important principles. The Commission will work with local government to adopt policies that protect affordable housing. It will also support measures that protect existing affordable housing. That's what we have in Sharp Park, Fairway Park, and the entire coastal zone. Existing affordable housing, affordable recreation, and the majority of Pacifica businesses. Let's clearly say we will protect them. How can the Coastal Commission disagree with that? Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Cheryl Calson and Chris Redfield is the last card.
Good evening. I'm here to oppose the language proposed in Attachment H and the subsequent removal of the words "for detached from," which had been added prior to the meeting on 2/3/2020. I also like to dispel the idea that I met with planning in a backdoor meeting. I asked for the meeting to discuss our position paper, which actually included other items like residential, what was meant by residential. I wanted further clarification of that. I wanted to discuss density in light of the need for housing and just review some of the themes that were in my paper, my 10-page paper that I wrote. So I wasn't having a backdoor meeting. I was there to discuss the paper. However, I did see in the agenda packet for the third Attachment H, and that is what came up in the discussion because we were talking about that there had been an email exchange amongst leaders, and some language was proposed that residential development without mixed use is permitted on the site, our site, as long as there's a component of commercial mixed use on the site. So therefore, the language that was proposed by Mr. Murdoch, residential detached from commercial, was going to be presented that evening. So that is how that came about. In Attachment H, what I object to is the word residential was removed, and that was recommended by city council at the A26/2020 meeting for the LDI20 policy statement and as the policy statement for our property. The other thing that was removed from CRMU was housing at a range of densities. And then added words to the LD policy were, in conjunction with small-scale visitor-oriented commercial uses or as a standalone project without residential uses. So I felt that the residential piece that was there as of A26 was now being removed. So therefore, I oppose the changes in LD-I-20 in Attachment H, and I oppose the removal of the words "or detached from" at the meeting. I do believe that the council had compromised and lowered the density severely on our property and were permitting residential use in August in the minutes and everything. So no backdoor meeting. It was for me to discuss our position. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris Redfield and Teraz Langio.
Evening again, staff council. A few things just popped up. I wanted to comment on the post-printed agenda document that Ms. Gold put out. I wish I was that person that came here, you know, many years ago and took that photo from the exact same position, looked at Pedro Point, because it's changed radically, I believe, as Marcia had stated. She bought her home, there were 13 other homes. The only thing that stays the same is everything changes. That property has never been a wetland. Every property on Pedro Point is a wetland. If you drive up there after any time, you'll go for months now and see water coming out of everyone's property up that. So you cannot say that the person at the bottom of the hill is a wetland. That berm that protects that property, I believe, was the railroad, Ocean Shore Railroad property, berm. That's why it's there. That's why that property is low. It was never degraded. That berm was elevated. I wanted to bounce around a little bit. I really appreciate the city applying for that $4.5 million grant for the seawall improvements. I think that's huge from the Department of Boating and Waterways. It speaks volumes, I think, for the city, the city's intent to move forward on that, but the language does need to be clarified, as was spoken on earlier. And some bullet points on Ms. Gold's thing, the undeveloped open space. Most of the homes appeared in the last, have appeared in the last 30 years. Undeveloped? That all was undeveloped. A seasonal wetland habitat, as again I said, every single property on that Pedro Point are seasonal wetlands. We all know where water flows. Flood plain from runoff from surrounding area, refer to item one. Runoff, access to Pedro Point, excuse me, access to Lindemar Beach, in technical terms, that'd be trespassing. There are two trails that go through that property. That's someone else's property. You know, we've all spoken on that on the quarry. That's kind of a thing that gets go, but no one else would allow people to walk across your property, but it becomes open space technically. I don't think 90% of the community that lives there now has been there in the past 50 years. They're all speaking like it's like they've been there forever. They haven't. None of us have. I wish you enjoy the private property. If you enjoy it, buy it at market rate. To hell with housing and economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And Teraz Langio is the last card I have.
I'll be nice and keep it short for all of you. I'd like us all to imagine the unimaginable. The berm along the Pacifica Golf Course fails, exposing the residents of Shark Park to massive flooding. We understand their concerns. At least they have the golf course to absorb and hold some of that floodwater. That is what we are trying to prevent in Pedro Point and why we need that field kept as a protective wetland. We too have a berm that will inevitably fail. Climate change is inevitable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I don't have any more cards, so we have a discussion point here and then ask for rebuttal after the discussion?
No, we would ask for rebuttal now.
Oh, okay.
I think there's only one minute left of rebuttal.
Right. So Joanne, do you want your one-minute rebuttal or?
She said no.
It's all you guys.
She's waiting for no.
You said no.
Great.
So you want to close the public hearing?
Well, we'll close the public hearing then. And I will open it to council comments, questions, concerns.
My suggestion is that the council take up the issue first of the appeal and then take action on that and then deliberate on consideration of the draft LCLUP.
I don't see any red lights here. Anybody want to open the discussion?
I would like to ask a question. The designation of CRMU for the Calson property, when was that designated or when was that first? I'm trying to remember the dates of when we were first hearing that. It seems like it was in August, but I'm not sure. And so I'm trying to kind of go back in time as to when that first came up and the definition of it that was presented to us and to the planning commission.
Good evening, council. Senior Planner Christian Murdoch. This LCLUP and draft general plan update process began as far back as 2009. None of the planning staff here this evening were present, working for the city at that time, but to the best of our knowledge, the first formal publicly facing mention of that land use designation was in the March 2014 draft general plan and LCLUP versions.
Oh, a follow-up question. Does that, did that, and forgive me for not asking you this before, but it just occurred to me, does that definition generally include some kind of residential? Is there a, an understanding? It seemed to me when I heard the designation of C2 or something commercial that there had been, with exceptions or some kind of basis, that there had been housing included on what had otherwise been known as a commercial property?
So packet page 173 contains the description of the coastal residential mixed-use land use designation as recommended by the planning commission on February 3rd. The CRMU designation allows for residential use in certain forms and at a certain density, but it does not require residential use. And indeed, the bulk of the policy, I think, is tilted towards visitor-serving oriented, visitor-oriented commercial uses.
And that's in the general CRMU?
That's correct.
But if I am not mistaken, and I don't know where it is and on what packet page, the CRMU that's applied to the Calson Field is, does not allow the visitor-serving use of a hotel. Is that correct?
So policy LDI20, and I'll have a packet page for you in just a moment, that, it's packet page 195. That policy further focuses the CRMU designation for the site known as the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue site, which others called the Calson Field and other names. That policy, LDI20, provides more specific guidance on what uses should be permissible. It alters the range of permissible residential density. It also clarifies that a hotel would not be a permissible visitors-oriented use. So it does provide a variety of clarifications, but all of them remain consistent within
Can I just jump in here real quick to make sure that we're discussing the first item 4-1, which is the appeal of the planning commission's recommendation and not real specifics about the LCLUP, right?
The reason I was asking the questions I was asking is the appellant's assertion that this was a brand-new designation, that it had not been discussed or brought forward prior to the night of, and that there was no discussion about it, that there was no information about it prior to that day, except the clarified language printed that was in the back of the room.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing.
That's why I was trying to understand.
Mary? So is it okay to ask Commissioner Berman to describe the process that they went through to change the detached to the vertically horizontal? Is that okay to do that now or do I have to wait?
If that question is related to the appeal, yes.
Yeah, could you, thank you for being here, by the way.
You're welcome.
Yeah, could you describe the process that you guys went through? I mean, I watched the meeting, but I think for the public, it'd be really helpful just to understand why the changes were made and what the thought process was.
Sure. So the original changes that staff brought to the meeting were just small or verbal changes in the CRMU designation as well as LDI20. And in general, they were along the same lines as the typical CRMU designation that we had previously discussed in past months, and then just some clarifying language for LDI20. And those were provided to us and members that attended by, in regards to kind of the process of what we discussed and deliberating on the detached versus attached. So the detached language was inserted with the language that was brought to us. And during our deliberation, for the most part, the planning commission determined that detached residential for that particular lot, the Calson lot, would not be appropriate in context of the surroundings. And I think the majority of us agreed that an attached, whether vertical or horizontal, but attached on, attached with the commercial element would be more appropriate. So that was our deliberation in regards to the language that was presented to us.
Again, I appreciate your work. I guess I'm just not understanding fully, so the buildings would be built up instead of like maybe a detached quaint little?
Yeah, the main concern that we talked about was if a detached element was allowed at this lot in particular, then it could turn into just almost two separate developments, like a housing development with a separate small commercial development. In general, the planning commission believes that what would be more appropriate for this lot in particular would be a vertical or an attached development, not necessarily distinguishing vertical versus horizontal, but with one building.
Commissioner Berman, okay, if you have an attached building, that would almost create more mass, wouldn't it, in terms of if everything has to be attached, even if you put it all at one end of the property and the other end was vacant, it would be a bigger mass of buildings, whether you did it horizontal or vertical, you'd have a bigger mass of buildings than you would have breakup. Because like when I discussed this with planning staff today, when I was getting a lot of my questions answered, they said that with lot setbacks, et cetera, you would actually have more view corridors, people walking through and everything. So what is the reason, if that, if that is true, right, you'd have more of a view corridor because you have five-foot setbacks, 20-foot setbacks, you know, from the property line and stuff like that. I don't understand how attached units would be more visually appealing and less bulky-looking than detached.
So during our meeting, we didn't quite get into the aesthetics, especially because we didn't want to prescribe anything for the site, given that it'll be up to the developer when the time comes. So it was hard to kind of predict what type of bulky or not bulky development would be. I think our concerns were more so, especially given the opposition to residential from the community, that if we were to allow detached development here, then a developer would run with that and potentially develop a small commercial cottage or lot or building, I mean, and then make the majority of the development residential, in which case that certainly would strongly disagree with what the community's standpoint was. We didn't quite go into the heftiness of a development or not. I think in general, just for a control standpoint, we would assume the footprint of two separate detached buildings would be equivalent to the floor area of one attached.
Right, but it doesn't give the view corridors green space, you know, allowing for public walkways, potentially a kid's playground or whatever is normal in any sort of development, right? And by having it all compacted in one thing, I would think that'd be less visually appealing than detached because, Steph, the building is, the ratio we're talking about is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is three to five units per acre. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're talking, oh, go ahead.
Under policy LDI20, specific to this one site, yes.
Okay, so, and, but there's nothing saying there has to be three to five units in each acre. You could put 20, let's say you go to max, 25 units, because there's five acres, could all be in one end, right? But you'd have it detached. If you had it detached, it's just one big bulky building in one end, and the rest could be whatever, kids' playgrounds, open space, whatever it is, right? Because it seems to me that, because you used a phrase about the developer not being able to, there was a phrase you used, and I meant to remember it, but I-
Prescribed. We didn't want to prescribe the site and kind of predict what a developer would develop there.
Was there any thought to saying, making a condition, attached or detached?
That's what it was to start with. And then they took away the detached.
Oh, the detached, okay, okay. Okay, because if I'm, staff recommended having detached, if I, am I correct?
It was either, as I recall.
It was, it was either, we sought to, that was our understanding of the council's direction in September. And so what we did is we sought to clarify that by clearly stating that it could be detached or attached. And the, the Planning Commission felt that it should be attached.
Thank you.
And that particular item doesn't limit the number of buildings, because there could be five buildings with commercial on the bottom and five units on top, and therefore it could spread out all over the property.
Is this about the appeal or is this about the LCP? I'm confused if the decision was made on the appeal yet.
Yeah. No, there's been, there's been no decision on the appeal, and, and I was just about to pipe up, so thank you for that. And just to focus the council on, remember the appeal, just to address whether or not there was a Brown Act violation. So if the council wants to just deliberate on that, and then-
But the, the recommended action here actually doesn't clarify that in terms of, it seems like, if it says recommended action here, item number one, adopt the attached resolution denying the appeal and upholding the action. So if you deny the, the appeal, you uphold the action.
Of the, of the Planning Commission, but that doesn't mean you have to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation. The, the, the issue on the appeal is whether or not the council feels that the basis for the appeal, which was only that there was a Brown Act violation, is, is worth upholding.
Okay.
If not, then the council would move forward to talk about all of the-
Which is number two, which is adopting the resolution.
Which is, correct, which, which you will be discussing all of these particulars in item two, but in item one, it just deals with the appeal. And if the council wanted to uphold the appeal, then the action would most likely be to refer it back to the Planning Commission for further consideration.
Okay, so I'm gonna jump in here, if you don't mind. That was a little bit confusing to me, I have to admit, for item number one, 4-1, I guess. I, I definitely think that what happened that morning felt fishy, especially with such a sensitive piece of land, a sensitive property over the last couple decades. And maybe a little more thought could have been put into the discussions that were had, and it probably should have happened at the meeting that night, but it didn't. And so I get the idea that it needed to be brought to light. I'm not so sure it's, it's a Brown Act violation. I have a tendency to, to listen to my city attorney. I, I also get, I was married to a district attorney, so I get that the law is always different in, in different ways, so I understand that. And so, you know, I had a concern about that. I had, I spoke my piece with, with city manager, with city attorney, and with staff, let them know that, you know, for us, in, in our personal lives and other jobs that we have, when there are sensitive issues, they have to be approached sensitively. This is one of those times. And it unfortunately, from my perspective, was not approached as sensitively as it could have been. It did feel a little fishy, but ultimately, I, I don't believe that it's a Brown Act violation. I think it could have been done better, and I, I'm glad that you brought it up, because I don't think that it will happen again, given the, the current situation. This stuff happens all the time. It just so happened that it was with a piece of property that is highly contested. If it were the quarry, it would have been, we would have had the same issue. If it were, you know, the, I don't want to name a, any sort of property for fear of getting in trouble. But anyway, if it had just been any, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, ABC Street, it may not have been such an issue. I expressed my concern, and I think, I think it was heard, I think it was heard well, and I appreciate everyone's listening to me. So I don't think this is a Brown Act violation, and I'm, and I'm not gonna say anything more than that on this item. I will open the floor for discussion again, if we can try to keep it to that subject, that would be useful. Kevin, you want to say something? No?
Or to make a motion?
Or to make a motion, yeah, it's always on the table.
Well, I think I just do want to say that this was so confusing for me, like lumping these things together and just the way that it was stated in the proposed action was completely confusing to me, so I want to express that outwardly, that, yeah, just, I needed to get that on the record.
Noted. Does anyone have anything else, or anyone have a motion?
Well, I just wanted to say that I concur with your reasoning. I think that, yes, it was an unfortunate timing, however, I don't think there was a Brown Act violation. I do think that there was more information provided about information that was already in circulation on this topic. And it struck the people who saw it that night as a brand-new thing. And I don't feel that it was, I do feel that it was clarifying, and I think it did lead into a later, a larger conversation with the Planning Commission.
Anybody red light? No, I don't see any red lights up here. Got one.
So just make them, adopt the attached resolution denying the appeal and upholding the action taken by the Pacifica Planning Commission, February 3rd, 2020, approving Resolution Number 2020-002, Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Pacifica recommending that the City Council, the City of Pacifica, should transmit the local coastal land use plan file number 2020-001 to the California Coastal Commission for Certification and should adopt a resolution certifying that the local coastal land use plan is intended to be carried out in a manner fully in conformity with the California Coastal Act and finding that approval of the local coastal land use plan is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA? And what is the AND for?
I'm not, Mike, can you tell me where you're reading from?
Number one.
I'm reading from the, the-
Packet Page 48.
Right.
Agenda Page 3.
Or, or 48.
And then, do I need you to read?
So let's, so is there a second to that motion, or? Because I can, I can clarify the motion, because I see some puzzled faces.
I need clarification.
Is somebody, is somebody gonna second the motion, or?
I can read it a second time.
So what the council is doing, understand that the recommendation from the Planning Commission was not a final action. There was no final action taken by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission simply made a recommendation to the council. So the consideration of the draft LCLUP was always coming to the council. It was coming to the council, whatever recommendation the Planning Commission made. So denying the appeal is only saying that the Planning Commission's action with regard to the Brown Act was not a violation, that the Planning Commission did not violate the Brown Act by making their recommendation. It has nothing to do with the substance of the LCLUP. Item number one only has to do with the appeal that was raised by the appellant, and the appeal only addressed the Brown Act violation.
Does everybody understand that?
Yeah. But why is there an AND at the end of the resolution? Am I supposed to read number two?
No. No, that's the second, that's the second action.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion and we have a second. Please vote.
Wait, I'm a little confused, Steph.
So a yes vote is?
To deny the appeal.
Yep.
Yes is what you said you thought.
Right. But that's with appeals.
That passes, so the appeal is denied. Let's move on to item number two here. Adopting the attached resolution certifying the local coastal land use plan is intended to be carried out in a manner fully in conformity with the coastal, California Coastal Act. Approving transmittal of the post-consult draft LCLUP to the local, to the Coastal Commission for Certification and finding that approval of the post-consultation draft LCLUP is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Please discuss. All right, yeah, who wants to start here? This is a good one. But not that they all aren't.
Now we're talking about the LCLUP.
Yeah.
Correct.
I, I talked to staff this afternoon for probably about an hour about all my concerns and my questions, so. Share with you, you don't, I don't think Deirdre wants me to do that.
You're right. Sort of not joking.
Okay, all right, if you really want me to do, Page 2-2, it actually says in there that we have to have a, oh.
Packet Page, Mike.
The problem is, is I was doing these numbers, okay? That was part of my problem.
168.
Thank you. Okay, one of my questions was the fact that it mentions overnight hotels, and that a certain percentage of the overnight hotels have to be low-income, and I wanted to know how that was going to affect the Beach Boulevard site. Does it exist, does it affect all the hotels because they were existing with the coastal act and/or new additions? And what about Airbnbs? And Christian, do you want to give the answer? They all want to hear these again, I don't know why.
Sure, so the requirement that Councilmember O'Neill mentioned often arises in the processing of coastal development permits for visitor lodging, hotels and motels, for example. In my experience, and to the best of my knowledge, those requirements have not been applied retroactively to existing hotels because they're not coming in for a permit. In cases where a hotel may trigger a coastal development permit requirement due to a substantial addition or modification, it's possible those requirements could be imposed if the, if the coastal development permit is subject to the policies that would be adopted in the LCP, or if it's appealed to the Coastal Commission. We've had recent experience with one hotel, the Holiday Inn Project in Rockaway Beach. To the best of staff's recollection, that project did not ultimately include set-asides for lower-cost accommodations, so it's not, it's not a certainty that a hotel project in particular would be subject to those requirements. And they do not apply to short-term rentals in that they, those uses are not subject to coastal development permits.
It's the same answer he gave me this afternoon?
Yeah, but the public needs to hear it.
Okay.
Because there's public out there that are like me, that really need to hear everything. And so I'm, I got plenty of questions.
Okay, I, I can, let's see. Okay, I brought up a thing on Page 2-16, which I gotta find on the-
182.
In the local coastal plan. It brings up the fact that it says, allows uses that create public access to the natural setting and are adaptable, low-intensity visitor-serving development, long north perimeter with there, and enriched, let's see, is this the one we're about moving? Touch use with a low development impact, which are readily relocated, yeah, are readily relocated to adapt to evolving coastal conditions. And I brought up a question in terms of, is this going back to the residential building guidelines, which were about, which they came out with in 2018, saying that you had to post a bond to cover the relocation of the property? You couldn't do anything to extend the life of your property, et cetera, et cetera? And that the Coastal Commission was, wanted the, the ability to tell us to eminent domain and tell Pacifica, you have to move that building? And, and Christian was able to answer my question, that this is really designed, being it is for low-impact visitor commercial, this is something for like a Boy Scout troop has the campground there, and they can move the tents back, or if they're hikers' huts, you know, stuff that's not actually firmly bolted to the ground and part of the ground. So that's what that, he answered that question and allayed my concerns about that. Let's see, 227, let's see, 227, LD 1-6. Okay, and basically, my other one answered the same question. Do you have a question? Go ahead.
Oh, no, no, I, go ahead. I just, my button's next, I think.
Well, I'm just doing this because somebody needs to get started. Let's see, 229, let's see, LD 120. Development must include public court. Okay. I, I'm muttering to myself, I'm sorry. Because I've, you know, I have my notes here, and I'm trying to think of what I asked for. Okay, my big, one question I have is on Page 231, and it was, as described in the general plan, there are an estimated 1,280 acres of vacant or underutilized land classified for residential or mixed use in the Pacifica planning area, build out of an estimated 80%. And my question to staff on that was, all right, it says there's, that we would result in a total of 1,040 new housing units. How does that impact our RENA numbers, if our RENA numbers are supposed to be in the neighborhood of 1,400? And then he was able to tell me what would be the next steps.
That's right, so we're on Packet Page 197, and what this means is that if we were to receive a regional housing needs allocation, which is the figure produced by the state and regional governments every eight years in our area for our long-term housing needs for that eight-year period, what this would mean for us is that if we received that 1,400 unit allocation, we would not have sufficient sites to accommodate all of those housing units. And the city would need to go through the planning process to identify new sites or new land use designations or both that could accommodate at least that number. And as we're thinking about that process that might unfold, it's likely that we would need to plan for some greater number than that to account for provisions in state law related to no net loss if certain development projects develop at less than their maximum potential. And so we'd be looking at probably some much greater number, you know, some multiple of the 1,400s for, 1,400 units, for example.
I mean, that's just guess estimate, because they told us at that meeting, three to four times what you have, and our allocation now is 400, so that would bring us up to 1,400, 1,500, okay. Then, let's see, that's pretty, that was pretty much it, my questions, the rest of them.
Mary?
So I think I want to pay attention to some of the public comments that were made tonight, and kind of address some of those, if I could. The first one is the cost-benefit analysis that was brought up from the folks from the golf course. I'm wondering why the disclaimer, disclaimer language was removed, and can it be put back in? What's, why was, why was it removed first?
Well, as we look at the document, the language is there, so I'm not sure-
Oh, it is.
I'm not sure where the disconnect is with some of the commenters.
Well, that's good to know.
Could you point to it?
Yeah, what page is on? It's on Page 324.
Packet Page 324?
Oh, the Packet.
The gentleman is still here from the golf course. It would be good to have, you know-
Easier, yeah.
Specific conversations with you, just so you understand that the language still is in there. It's important that we get information across as specifically as we can.
It's in, on the page that Ms. O'Connor mentioned, and it's middle of the second paragraph on that page.
So it says, where is it? Moreover, the cost-benefit analysis section of the adaptation plan.
Was not adopted or approved by the City Pacifica. The purpose of the cost-benefit analysis was to provide information regarding various sea-level rise scenarios and adaptation options and was not intended to prescribe specific adaptation policies. The cost-benefit analysis shall not be used for any future purpose by the City Pacifica or its planning processes, including implementation of the local coastal program, public infrastructure investment permitting, or other regulatory purposes.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, somebody mentioned a coastal combining zone. What is that?
Oh, yeah.
The coastal zone combining district, it's a zoning overlay district. It's not part of the local coastal land use plan that we're discussing tonight, but it is part of the city's implementation plan, which is the second piece of the overall LCP or local coastal program. So it's, it's just the formal zoning district that the council has adopted for the nineteen-eighty LCP that we have currently. Identify those geographic areas within the coastal zone.
Okay.
Can I bring up one thing?
Yeah, please.
I also, Christian, I asked you about this when you and I were meeting this afternoon, well, with Bonnie and Tina, about the environmental justice component, about putting in the verbiage the Gulf Alliance wanted, and could you answer the question as to why you felt it wasn't needed at this point?
Sure, I think part of the reference made in the comment letters describing environmental justice policies of the city, I think staff reaches a different conclusion reading those documents. There is mention in the council's goals for the sea-level rise adaptation planning process that environmental justice was an important component of that process. It was an objective, I believe, or a goal of the outcome of the process, but it was not in and of itself an environmental justice policy adopted by the city council. To staff's knowledge, the city council has not adopted an environmental justice policy, and we believe that to do so may be beneficial, but it should be part of a proper policymaking process. The Coastal Commission itself only adopted an environmental justice policy in 2019, and this draft, as we know, has been several years in the making. And so when we received what was, I think, in my perspective, a rather late comment on that issue, we did our best to put in reasonable environmental justice objectives and policies, but that those would be policies we hope that everyone in the council could universally agree to without having gone through a more robust process. We hope that over time, with subsequent LCP amendments, we can really shell out that policy to the extent that the council wishes to do so. But for now, we did our best to respond to that Coastal Commission comment, and that's what you see in the document now.
On packet page two forty-nine.
Two forty-nine.
Two forty-nine.
And I also think the context, the city manager mentioned this, and it was backed up by the staff in terms of what the, how the Coastal Commission responds to different things, in terms of, they don't come out with A, B, C, D, E, F, they'll come out with A, B, F, G, H, I points, and not ever come forth with every point that they have an issue with, but reserve some for later torture or whatever, right? It's like water torture almost. Am I correct?
I don't know if I'll go on record saying the Coastal Commission process is like water torture, but it's certainly challenging. I think what you're alluding to is a broader recommendation from staff that the Coastal Commission's latest comment letter on the post-consultation draft has raised some new issues, but more importantly, has indicated that they have not, in that letter, provided an exhaustive list of their issues. And so we find it difficult to adequately respond as staff to a letter that doesn't comprehensively state their comments or, and/or issues with the post-consultation draft. So to that end, we strongly suggest that the council take action either tonight or in a meeting very soon to transmit this document, so that we can prompt the Coastal Commission as part of the formal certification process to compel them to be forthcoming with all of their comments on this document. So we can look at that in totality as a city and then begin to address them comprehensively with the Coastal Commission, staff and the Coastal Commission members as well through that formal certification process.
And just to add to that, it's, it's our belief that we will not get all of the Coastal Commission's comment until we submit a council-approved draft LCLUP to them, so.
And so if we vote to move this forward tonight, that will be the council-approved draft LCLUP, to get comments that we can address all their concerns within the next few months, correct?
Well, we, we have, as, you know, Senior Planner Murdoch stated, we have already begun this process of discussing items with the Coastal Commission, and clearly we were not, we've not completed that process. But we can't even begin to complete that process until we have submitted to them a council-approved draft LCLUP that we can then submit to them formally and then continue on with the process. We will not receive all of their comments until we take that action.
Thank you.
So we've got Sue Beckmeyer.
I don't want to change the direction, Mike, if you have more on your questions. All right, I have a concern about the comments that were made, and I asked questions on this when I met with planning staff last week in regard to the seawall. And could you refer, all of us, myself included, to the packet page that has the definition of SESM on it, so that we could look at that one more time in the context of my question about the seawall?
I believe it's either three seventy-nine or three eighty.
Three eighty.
Three eighty? Okay. So it was when we were discussing this topic, substantial exterior structural modification, SESM, any physical improvement which modifies an existing structure as defined to achieve any of the following, and then there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine paragraphs that further define that. My concern, this is one place that I saw potentially coming up, but there may be others, and you could point me to them. And my specific question was in regard to the seawall, because we are engaged presently in a process of looking at having an engineering study done with grant funding that we received from the state to replace the seawall. My concern was, we don't know what it's going to recommend, and I was afraid that we were going to possibly limit our ability to produce a seawall that is the seawall we need if we adopt a policy that's too restrictive. And so my concern was, how does this apply to the seawall? And I think that was raised earlier in a comment from the public, so can you speak to that?
Certainly. So this concept of substantial exterior structural modification, it's meant to be used to help determine when a modification to an existing structure becomes so substantial that it should, in effect, be treated like new development. And so there are some key exceptions to this definition, and one of them is for replacement of existing permitted shoreline protection. And so the allowance in this exception would allow the height or length to increase by up to ten percent, but it would not allow a fundamentally different or fundamentally larger seawall to be reconstructed under its provisions. That new seawall that exceeded the ten percent height increase, for example, would be permissible, and there are ample policies, including twenty-four, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and fifty-nine in chapter six, that support the construction of new seawalls or replacement of seawalls. So there's ample policy support in this document to support replacement of a much larger shoreline protection device, but the SESM is meant to allow one that's basically an in-kind replacement. Let's just say, for example, due to age, it's degraded, and the city wants to, or a private property owner wants to replace one in kind with modern, new construction materials, that's fine. Or in the case of our Beach Boulevard northern portion of that shoreline protection device, perhaps it's not the right engineering design, but one could be redesigned potentially within the same form, but to be a proper seawall, that would be exempted under this definition of SESM. And potentially some of the mitigations and other requirements for a new seawall would not be applicable to that project because, in effect, it's the same physical form, it's just new material.
But what if it needed to be bigger? What if it needed to be twelve percent bigger? Would this policy disallow that?
There's ample support in this document as drafted to support approval of that twelve percent taller seawall.
So those policies you enumerated a minute ago, fifty-seven and all that.
That's right.
Is where you feel we have the authority to take care of that shoreline protection, which is protecting public infrastructure? So that's my big concern, is I don't want us to, you know, sign off on an LCLUP that later, because our engineering studies are not in yet, we find out later, oh, we should have had more flexibility, we should have allowed for more, I don't know. And that's my concern, it's a timing issue.
So, yeah, I think it's important to note, this SESM definition does not, it's not a measure of saying you can or cannot do something. In effect, if you qualify as a SESM, or, excuse me, if you're exempt from the SESM definition, it's in effect, if you will, just conceptually, it's an expedited process in a sense, right? There are fewer requirements. The other policies allow you to do something that would be a SESM, but you have to go through a more robust process to analyze, perhaps to mitigate. And so it's, it's not a yes or no in this definition, it's a, you know, simple or more complex type of decision.
Okay, so just to put a complete point to it, is it, do you then feel there's no need for us to have a specific carve-out language or some kind of specific addition to this plan to address my concern?
I think, in my opinion, it's adequate as written. I think we've, we've struck a reasonable balance between significant new structures with much higher bulk and height, for example, that probably reasonably should go through an appropriate planning process and mitigations if necessary, balancing that with trying to create a more simplified way to replace what's already there, in the hopes that it maybe will function better, maybe look nicer because it's not rusted out. You know, there are other qualifiers that would make that desirable, and it's not expanding coastal resource impacts, for example, because it's basically the same size and in the same location.
Okay. Mary?
So I realize that we want to get this document in, but I also realize that we have an opportunity to do it right. And so I'm very concerned that the outpouring of concern from our Pedro Point community is not being heard, like, in comparison to, say, like, the outpouring of our Fairway Park folks, okay? So we took a lot of time and we listened to those folks and we added changes. And so I, I feel, yeah, I just, I feel very concerned that we're not hearing our Pedro Point folks, so I need to say that out loud. And then also, somebody from Pedro Point brought up the fact that they wanted some impact studies, did I understand that right? Yeah, that was you. And so were any done on that property? Or can you explain that, or?
Well, I think, as we've explained as staff in earlier hearings, some of the requests or insistence from some commenters on very specific technical studies, those almost always would be done in conjunction with a specific development project. It's difficult to analyze a lot of issues in the abstract without knowing how the natural environment would be affected by the proposed built environment. With that said, there are policy documents, like specific plans, in some cases, that are trying to advance the policy much closer to a project approval, and they do much more site-specific analyses with certain assumptions about a future development, but that's not what's proposed in this document. And so I think it's our opinion that further technical studies would be premature at this time.
And I will add to that, I'm sorry, that the, that the, there's some language along with LDI twenty that does.
With the italics?
Yeah, in italics, it does allude to the need for additional technical studies.
Right, I did take note of that, thank you. I know my questions are all over the place, but I'm just going to go ahead and ask them anyway. So on packet page one ninety-five, in regards to the Rockaway Beach headlands, it was my understanding before that this area, which is like historically susceptible to bluff erosion, was going to be zoned conservation, but it's not, I'm concerned that there's going to be some kind of development up there, and it just doesn't seem like that would be the right place to do any of that. I'm concerned about that.
The Rockaway Headlands site is proposed for the low-intensity visitor-serving commercial land use designation. Conservation, I think, in staff's perspective, would probably be inappropriate. The site's privately owned, and conservation would not allow reasonable economic use of the property. It does admittedly have interesting access constraints in that it's not clear how that development at that site would access a public road, for example. So those types of constraints could preclude development until they're resolved, but it would be inappropriate for the city to categorically prevent economic use. This low-intensity visitor-serving commercial designation, it's intended for sites like this that have unique challenges, in particular geotechnical challenges like erosion or instability, where less-than-large permanent developments would be allowed on the site. So similar to Councilmember O'Neill's discussion of hikers' huts or campgrounds or what have you, those kinds of less-than-permanent, easily relocated type uses, that's what's proposed for the Rockaway Headlands site.
Okay, thank you.
You done for a minute? Okay, Mike?
Kind of going back to what Councilman Beckermeier said, I was reading the, what did you, the call on the SESM, S-E-S-M? And a lot of those are what was in part of the residential building guidelines back in 2018. And if we approve something with this verbiage in there, is that a backdoor way for the Coastal Commission to come back to us and say, well, you've already approved this part of the guidelines? Do you know what I mean, kind of a back? So instead of adopting one entire document, you're adopting piecemeal through this. Has, do you know if that has ever happened, or?
What I would say to that concern is that this definition does not incorporate by reference any aspect of the Coastal Commission's policy documents. It's a standalone City of Pacifica policy document definition that we custom-tailored. I think some of it may look and feel familiar because we did our best to borrow concepts that the Coastal Commission has already accepted itself, but then to tailor them where appropriate to Pacifica's particular circumstances. So, for example, the fifty percent threshold was accepted by the Coastal Commission, and so we tried to rely on that to minimize opportunities for disagreement on the appropriate quantitative threshold. But in areas where we tailored it to Pacifica's needs, for example, is we took out references to valuation of the improvements. We didn't think that those were relevant for purposes of coastal hazard exposure, for example. Just because something costs a bunch of money doesn't mean it's more dangerous. So a lot of the material is familiar because we did borrow it from various Coastal Commission documents or the coastal act, but there is our own fingerprint, if you will, on this in the sense that we tweaked many of those or we added language of our own.
Thank you.
So the SESM basically is redevelopment redefined?
In so many words, yes. In so many words, yes.
Okay. One, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead.
One question I had, that we had spent some time on, the last go-around on this, was the issue of 1977. And what I wanted to clarify is my understanding, and tell me if I'm not correct in this, that these policies, the effective time for these policies, they are not backward-looking. So it would affect, it would take effect for any new development from the point at which this was accepted by council, or was it by the CCC?
So the definition of existing structure is on packet page 375. There are a few different criteria, but I think the one of importance, or greatest importance, at least, is the one that you're referencing, Mayor Potem, in that we feel strongly that the policies in this document need to be applied in the future, moving forward, not retroactively to existing development. And so, it would set the date for being an existing structure at the date of certification of this document by the Coastal Commission, or the city council following acceptance with modifications. So it would be whenever this took effect, sometime, you know, this year, or next, or whenever, that would be. We feel strongly about that date because we believe that the Coastal Act has not been applied consistently in the way that the Coastal Commission would suggest, and that it's not fair in that unclear regulatory environment to retroactively apply very restrictive standards, including an inability to armor one's property when they've been making significant financial investments for the better part of 40 years, since adoption of the Coastal Act.
Right.
And so, we think that this is the only reasonable date to include, to protect the investments that our community members have made, and then to make very clear and put them on notice from this point forward, that investments in their property may trigger that SESM definition, and that they may not be afforded all of the rights that they may have once enjoyed.
But by defining it clearly, people would understand what would trigger that?
That's our hope, that we explicitly spelled out what is a substantial exterior structural modification, and the date from which we would begin measuring additions or modifications to the structures. That's been a muddled picture for a very long time, and we don't think that muddled picture should serve as a basis for taking away significant property rights, like armoring one's property.
I agree. And so, the SESM references, is it in the SESM, or is it somewhere else that specifically references the policies about not moving, if you're doing a remodel, let's say, of your property, you can't go closer to the shore, you can't expand the overall mass of the project? Is that in the SESM, or is it elsewhere that we?
It is mentioned in the SESM definition, and it's called a C-word encroachment.
Right.
And I just want to clarify that, it's not that you can't, it's if you, if that is what you want to do, you have more analysis and maybe mitigation to do, rather than a more streamlined process, if you don't encroach, for example, farther closer to the ocean.
Thank you for clarifying that.
So, for the public, one of my questions was, what is the consequence of not having an approved LCP by the Coastal Commission? My question was, do they not delegate permitting to the City of Pacifica? But what actually happens is that if we do not have a certified local coastal plan, it just reverts to our current local coastal plan, which is our, which is the existing permitting process. So, a non-certified local coastal plan does not mean that we don't have any power in the coastal zone.
It refers to 1980.
1980, yeah.
So, one of the, one of the things I ran my campaign on was to protect our beaches and protect our boulevards, so have beaches to walk on and boulevards to walk on, right? And part of that is our seawall here, making sure that we protect all of our infrastructure here, but also being smart about it. And many of you know that, not only myself, but my constituents, who I represent, were highly opposed to the recent Beach Boulevard development that was approved at Beach and Paloma, because it is in what I call the splash zone, and they will have limited access to their homes at certain times of the year. Whether that's in the staff report or not, I know that to be a fact. So, my idea of being a voice for the community is to make sure that we protect those vulnerable, most vulnerable, and not create those vulnerable situations. So bear with me here. Pacific Skies Estates, they kicked everyone out, and, you know, they revamped all those, the park here, the trailer park, and now they're a lot more expensive to live there, but those folks were already vulnerable, there was nowhere else to go. The Esplanade Apartments up there were not low-income when I lived there. They were very expensive when I lived there, and only became lower income as the coast started to erode. And we let that situation happen. We created a vulnerable community. Those folks had nowhere to go because we did not plan. So my question to, that probably cannot be answered, is to the city staff, how do we allow smart development without creating vulnerable communities? If, for a wild example, the Calson property is slated for low-income, how do we not allow them to become a vulnerable community in a low-lying area that is vulnerable to sea level rise and tsunami flood zones? And with a whole community who never wanted to, you know, pay taxes to support their infrastructure that was never there to begin with? So how do we avoid creating these situations? And why are we not listening to the Coastal Commission's advice on smart development? I do believe in planned retreat. A lot of this community believes in planned retreat, and what I don't believe in is creating situations where we are basi, we're creating vulnerable communities. So how do we avoid those situations, but do it smartly in areas that we don't own, that are privately owned? It's a difficult question, I know.
I think I would start by responding that this document answers that question by saying we ought to apply the best available science, and that's the policy that this process developed. And so, the coastal vulnerability zone maps are meant to be an important part of that process, to use the best available science to model sea level rise, coastal flooding, and potentially other hazards, and determine those areas where land use may need to be changed to adapt and address those, in areas where, based on our best available science, there are not any known hazards of significance. And so, I think that's how we imagine this document helping guide us, and where development or property may be within a coastal vulnerability hazard zone, there are policies to require very specific analyses to determine, can those be mitigated and development can proceed? Or should development not be allowed to occur in the fashion that it's proposed? So I think that's how I would suggest that this document would allow us to address that really difficult situation. And an important, you know, undertone to that is that it's not the best available science now and forever, it's periodically revisiting this document, you know, every five years or so, to make sure that we're using the best available science, the models, if they've been updated, that we incorporate them, and that we continue to allow this map and our other policies to address the situation as we're, we understand it with the best available science at that time.
I would also add that we also have policies to hopefully not box property owners into a corner in the future, where we state that we're going to expand our transfer of development rights ordinance, and even consider perhaps other programs that we're not even thinking of, that are being implemented elsewhere in the country or in the world, that would allow the property owner to get some value out of their property while not, perhaps not developing it, and maybe not, you know, helping them maybe make a difficult decision a little easier for them.
Okay, thanks. And I just, you know, there were two houses, I think, that were removed since I've been here up on Esplanade, and those folks had some really tough decisions to make. We, the City of Pacifica ended up helping them in one case, but the other case, we just, we really couldn't. We're going to be faced with that situation again, with those other few houses that are up there. But in the meantime, we're making these folks up here in Shoreline house poor because they're spending all of their extra income shoring up their seawall there. And at the same time, for a coastal destination, I'm just sort of making a plea here, where are we going to surf if all we have is rocks? I can't surf here anymore, we're just creating this terrible, you know, wall that this, you know, you can barely surf here anymore, you'd be able to. And if we don't have a beach to surf, then how are we going to be a coastal destination? So, so thank you for that. It's a great answer, unfortunately. I love science. I think the science will come out in the wash here. So, the, yeah, I think it's a really good point, Dan, when you say that, you know, we're talking about, you know, at the same meeting, a house falling into the ocean, what are we going to do about that when we're, at the same time, considering developing just mere feet from that same ocean? Doesn't make sense to me. I look forward to seeing the final results from the Coastal Commission. I really look forward to it. But I also think that we, I'm going to use Mary's term here, have a great opportunity to be able to sort of meet some of those needs ahead of time, and I don't unfortunately think that we have enough consensus on council, with my idea that we need to plan a little bit better and meet Coastal Commission. And some people think we have the opportunity to be the, we are the poster child, whether we like it or not, but which way are we going to go? Are we going to be the poster child for predictive science, or are we going to be the poster child for, you know, the opposite? So, Sue Beckerman, you have something to say?
Yeah, I would like to, my two big things that I really wanted to make sure I got in tonight were about this seawall and my concerns that we not accept, move forward with a project that ties our hands. And kind of, in the similar vein, totally different topic, but I want to speak about the Calson property, the LD 120 on packet page 195, and the whole issue about attached versus detached, and also about densities. Because what I think I've heard, I haven't participated in these conversations for 20 years, or for 10 years, but what I've heard is a continuous call for lower and lower density, including zero residential. But yet, what I also understand is that all of the designations of this property in prior plans allowed for it. So what we were looking at, that was a change from the 2014 proposed plan, if I recall, had a density of 15 units per acre. We then had a long meeting, or two, with the Planning Commission, and we had a lot of discussion about low-intensity visitor-serving, very low intensity, and we were talking about a range of three to nine units. That's how that was defined, three to nine. But at a specific meeting, one of the Planning Commissioners suggested that we should have no more than three to five units per acre, that that would not be, that he wouldn't be comfortable with anything more dense than that. And there was a lot of discussion among council and the Planning Commissioners at that time. And that is what has continued to go forward in this plan ever since that date. And I would need you to refresh my memory on when we had the joint meetings with the Planning Commission and council, I think it was September 3rd, but I'm not sure. So, what I took from that is an understanding on the part of Planning Commissioners, council members, that there's going to be some residential involved in this property. It seems like that was the conclusion. And it's as, it's as not dense as it can be, and still be. With regard to the issue about affordable housing, I don't think that should be a concern for anyone, because this density is so low, it's probably really, 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 really unlikely that there's a project that can be created that will pencil out. So, I feel like we've talked about the issue of density, we've talked about the issue of residential or not, and it seemed like the way people were comfortable about talking about it was, okay, if it's mixed use, okay if it's got, if it's got commercial attached to it. But I had occasion to have a meeting, in fact, Marcia referred to our council debate discussion at the firehouse, and many residents of Pedro Point pointed out to me how displeased they were with a building that was under construction at that time, at the end of Pedro Point, near the taproom. How, what a monstrosity it was, how out of scale it was, how inappropriate it was for that area, and how much they didn't want to look at it. And so, when I hear the Planning Commission talking about putting residential over retail and requiring attached commercial, I think we're setting ourselves up for more blocky buildings that people think are monstrosities. So we're looking about, we're looking at an area that is a nice residential area. There's an area that's zoned commercial, this piece of property is within that, there's been different definitions of what does "commercial" mean, how do we describe it over the decades? There's a street where the firehouse is, that if I'm not mistaken, is also mixed use? Am I right?
That's correct, Denman Avenue, yes.
But people live there, and that's where my house is, and this is a residential area, why does it have to be commercial? I don't know why it has to be, it is that way. I think that the thing that we need to do here is be sensitive to, and listen to the neighbors, and listen to everyone, and put together, and gel all of that information together into something that can, we can move forward with. And that's what I feel has been going on in this process, because, as I said, I've seen the density go smaller and smaller and smaller, and I feel that was a response to the needs of the community that had been expressed. The community is shaking its head no at me right this minute, clearly they disagree. But I'm telling you, what I, my thinking is, I've had feedback from many constituents who've said, you need to talk about what your thinking is, what your reasoning is, so people understand. And that is what I wanted to say about this property. This has been my reasoning, this has been my understanding, I feel there have been compromises, and I feel we're at a place where we're about as compromised as we can get and still allow economic use of the property. So I don't agree with the idea of requiring retail to be, or residential, commercial to be only attached. I don't agree with that recommendation from the Planning Commission. I feel that does prescribe and require a very different result than what Councilmember O'Neill was describing earlier. I had also the vision of small- of smaller homes could be separated from the retail, and there'd be more flexibility for designing a project that the community can live with. And that is what I have to say.
Okay. It's 10:30, and we usually take a vote around 10:30 to see how much longer we're going to go. Looking at the agenda, because we still have a few more items on the agenda this evening, and I'm looking for any ideas. I can propose one, but...
Is there an estimate as to how long the financial thing is going to take?
The pension update and the long-term financial plan and the mid-year budget updates are pretty straightforward. How long they take will depend on the number of questions from council or any public input that remains. But, you know, my guesstimate would be if the council does a head nod about, you know, sort of their comfort level, that they're not going to take that long.
Um, hang on. Receive, accept, move to adopt. If we have a resolution for a budget, I mean...
All right.
It's midnight.
Yeah, midnight.
Twelve.
So, can we push any of these items? What happens if we don't get to them? What happens if we propose midnight and then we don't get to them? I don't want to go to midnight. We have to get up early tomorrow.
The, I'll turn to Assistant City Manager Hines here. I would suggest we would do the mid-year budget update. It could be that the long-term financial plan, as well as the pension update, could be pushed to the beginning of March. That sort of is a kickoff driving our budget development process. But if ACM Hines has any alternative, is he...
Okay. So, why don't we push items five and six? We'll do item seven, but we won't go past 11:30 tonight? What do you think about that?
Sounds fair to me.
That's fine.
Yep, okay. And we're also going to take a five-minute break right now?
We are? Okay.
I was looking for ACM Hines on that. Did you...
So, the proposal is to push items five and six, which are the pension and long-term financial plan, to the next meeting, but also, but go over the mid-year budget, but we're not going past 11:30. Okay? Okay, five-minute break. Be back in five.
I look very happy about that.
Okay, we're back on? Okay. So, where were we? Where were we? Oh, yeah, local coastal plan. Sue Bottelas.
Okay, I'm going to continue on the Calson property. I also think it should be detached because I can see a vision of it and not like five, three-story buildings that look like square boxes. I know we're not making a prescription for the property, but I think that the housing could be detached. I totally agree. We went lower and lower and lower on the numbers. And I also agree. I've heard recommendations. I've talked to people on Pedro Point many, many times. I've gone over this for 20 years, this particular item. I've heard that we could sell Christmas trees or plant pumpkins, and that could be the economic engine for that property. I don't see it. And I do have a question about why can't you put a hotel? Because it would seem like the use would be not so traffic-oriented, a hotel.
Yeah, I don't know. And in answering that, I don't know. I just want to clarify one of the earliest statements I made this evening. The hotel prohibition is actually in the coastal residential mixed-use broader description, not specific to the San Pedro Avenue site, the Calson property.
Okay, it's in all of...
It's in all of the CRMU, and the reason for that, I do not know.
Okay. And as far as the property at 184 Paloma, is that the correct address?
Yes.
I would like to see them have the ability to do commercial as well as residential there.
And the planning commission did recommend that, and it's included as such in this draft, yes.
I read so many drafts that... Okay, that's it for the moment.
I have a question. So, you're talking about doing, looking at the best scientific data out there every five years. Is that what you said? And so, do you think reviewing things every five years is enough to, like, give leeway, like, or allow lead time for changes that need to be made in case something does happen drastically with our environment? Does five, every five years give enough lead time?
That's, it's a great point. I think the five-year interval, one way I think about that is it's probably a good balance as slow as bureaucracy can move and to balance the public process and all of that financial planning that the city has to do to manage a process. I think five years is probably about as often as we could probably undertake that. I think it's not as though the policies would be taking effect on rolling five-year bases. I think it would give us a chance every five years to say, hey, do these policies reflect the long-term needs of the community? And so, it's not as though each policy would have to be implemented within that five years, and then we start over with new policies. It's really just reflecting on them, refreshing them where needed, including new policies where appropriate, scratching old policies that are no longer relevant. And so, as it relates to some of the better-known strategies like managed retreat, what this document says is that it's not a near-term strategy, but it could be reconsidered if feasibility and monitoring warranted. So, that's just one succinct example of how this document recognizes that. Managed retreat may be something for the future, but it's not something for now because as you're talking periods of implementation, we do not have enough time at this stage to implement a managed retreat strategy citywide. And so, that takes time to plan, logistically, financially, legally, et cetera. And so, that's where the five-year revisit interval probably does make sense.
But the monitoring happens all the time.
It would be a continuous process. There are some parameters for when and how the monitoring would occur. But yes, it's not meant to only happen once every five years.
Okay, that's, that's good.
I could add to what Mr. Murdock was saying. In the same vein, monitoring will occur all the time.
Constantly.
And sometimes nature behaves sort of episodically when it comes to coastal erosion. And so, there could be monitoring that results in obvious incidents related to properties that causes the property owner to need to reevaluate at that point in time, and thus the city to reevaluate, whether it's two years from now, four years from now, seven years from now. So, you know, but when you're doing planning documents, you kind of need to identify, well, what is the sort of very basic timeline element of measuring things? So, that's where the five-year thing comes from.
Okay. Okay, so this is how I understand this process. Yeah, this document gets transmitted to the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission's going to come back with all kinds of comments. And it's just, and so, to me, I guess what I'm saying is I would be in favor of pushing something through just because I know it's just going to come back. And you're going to have to answer a bunch of new questions from the Coastal Commission. And we can't have a certified plan without the Coastal Commission, correct?
Correct.
So, until then, and if and when they certify, which we don't even know that they're going to do, we're still working on the 1980 document, right? So, I just wanted to make sure that I was very clear about that. And I just, I believe that the Coastal Commission's going to come back and come back and come back again. And so, until then, I mean, we have to get something in for that to happen, to move it forward. So, that's where I stand.
I have one more thing. I can't believe that surfing is more important than people.
Surfing is people.
It's recreation. People who live in houses, people who have businesses. Most of our low-income area in Sharp Park, where it's more affordable to live. I think that saving those properties is quite a bit more important than surfing.
I didn't say it was either more or less important. I'm saying it's important. Yeah, I am appreciative of all the hard work that went into this document and all the back and forth. I feel like the community process was very good. I would still like to see changes that I know will not fly with my fellow council members. One of them would be that the Calson property goes low-intensity visitor serving. I know that's not going to happen, but for the record. Also, I would like to see more of a gear towards long-range planning for protection of our recreation areas. And I'm not in favor of submitting a document that we know still has errors. It's like handing in because you know you've already, because you know they're going to, it's like, I don't know, why would I hand something in with mistakes, knowing full well that those mistakes are in there? Just get those right the first time, and then they'll come back with some other stuff. So, but I understand we go back and forth, and it'll come back. I'm looking forward to seeing their responses. But I don't like this local coastal plan as is. I just mentioned some of the changes that I would have liked to have seen. I understand they're not going to happen, but for the record.
I have one thing back on the issue of the economic analysis and the cost-benefit. Thank you for pointing out to me where that was, except for I didn't put a tag on my page. So, can you remind me again? And I want to cross, go ahead. It was packet page 324. 324, okay. So, I want to cross-reference that with the adaptation plan, where we're talking about the vulnerability assessment. It seems like the reference to that same piece of language is not verbatim. It's not the same language. Is it possible that we could restate that same language in that paragraph instead of the summarized version?
The summarized version?
On page 322.
So, three, wait.
322.
Packet page, packet page 322.
Sorry. So many pages, so little time. Okay, adaptation plan, right. Okay, and then what was the paragraph, what was the page that you just gave me, Barney?
324.
There it is. Okay. So, we were referencing the part where we said, moreover, the cost-benefit analysis, the cost-benefit analysis section of the adaptation plan was not adopted or approved by the the cost-benefit analysis section of the adaptation plan was not adopted or approved by the City of Pacifica. That's the piece of language we were talking about, right? So that same sentiment is repeated in the paragraph that says adaptation plan, but it's not as strong. It doesn't seem as clear. And so what I'm asking for, is there a way to restate that same language, or restate most of it, or do something to strengthen that?
Well, I will note that it is in the same section. So that whole section from 322 to 324 are all in the section titled Adaptation Plan. So maybe you would prefer to have that disclaimer moved to be right in the same location on page 322?
Oh, right, because it's coming before. I think that's what the confusion is. It's more detailed afterward, but to put it up higher in the doc...
Right. So just move that portion on page 324 to page 322.
Got that? Is that, are we making a change there?
It, well, that was the suggestion by one count, by the vice mayor. I don't know if there's a consensus to make that change.
That's fine.
Okay. Anyone have anything else? I have one more point on the surf stuff, Sue, is that there are many, there are many economic opportunities through surfing. We've got NorCal Surf, Sunlight Surf, Adventure Out, University of Surfing, Soul Grind, Traveler. I would venture to say a lot of the taquerias are being kept in business by the local surf community. I could go on. Anyway, I'm, the only reason I moved to Pacifica was because there was surfing in Pacifica. So there's also a lot of other people that only move to Pacifica because they're surfing in Pacifica. I'm not saying it's more important than people's houses, but I'm saying it's pretty important.
Okay.
Do you agree? It's pretty important.
You don't have to agree or disagree.
No comment.
So is there any more discussion up here? Are we still thinking deep thoughts, or we have any motions, or...
Two Sues seem to, you want to make a motion for the council property?
Yeah, I want to...
Move that along?
What do you want to say for that? I want to put the, not compel it to be attached, commercial. I want it to be the language that the Planning Commission had in the first place.
So if we can be specific on where you would like that language...
Let me find the right page.
Included, and then we can...
Just, I used to say attached or detached.
I can propose the language which the Planning Commission had to consider. And so that would, if you go down one...
What page, what packet page? Just go to the...
Packet page 195.
Okay. And then just read into the record how you're recommending that it be changed.
Right.
Residential uses shall be constructed either attached or detached to commercial uses.
Right, so the third sentence, as the Planning Commission had it to consider at the hearing, was residential uses may be constructed attached to or detached from commercial uses, provided the overall site contains both commercial and residential uses.
I'm sorry, can you say that again slower?
Residential uses may be constructed attached to or detached from commercial uses, provided the overall site contains both commercial and residential uses.
I agree with that.
I think at the very least, we could have left it that way. Because, you know, we have folks here that are obviously upset, and we have to listen to some of our community some of the time. I completely disagree with that. I would go with the Planning Commission's request.
Do you have a second?
I made that motion.
Oh, I second.
Are we voting on this? Or is this just an amendment?
No, we're not, we're not voting on this. We're going to vote on it when we vote on the whole...
So you have to have consensus, right?
Right, so we'd just like to get a consensus, because at the time of it, if there is a motion made, then staff will assist you in pointing out what amendments we have heard. So far, I've heard one. If there's a consensus that this is another change, then that would be two.
Okay, so we've got Sue, Sue, and Mike. Are you in agreement with Sue and Sue?
Give it more flexibility, I think you end up with a better design. So I would go with attached or detached.
Okay, so you've got three. I guess that's a majority considered a consensus. Okay, so that will be an amendment, right? Okay.
Are there any other changes to this draft, LCLUP, that any council members are interested in seeing?
Anyone else? Okay. Is there a motion at all, then? For the final? The final, final, which would be with that amendment...
Okay.
Both amendments.
I don't need to read one, right? Just two?
No, just two.
Okay, thanks.
And then, and then as amended?
Right.
And then staff will jump in with where those amendments will be found.
Adopt the attached resolution certifying that the local coastal land use plan is intended to be carried out in a manner fully in conformity with the California Coastal Act Public Resources Code Section 30,000 et cuit, approving transmittal of the post-consultation draft, LCLUP, to the Coastal Commission for certification, and finding that approval of the post-consultation draft, LCLUP, is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA as amended.
And those amendments are on packet page 195 in LD-I-20, inserting the language that staff had read earlier, which reads residential uses may be constructed either attached to or detached from commercial uses, provided the overall site contains both residential and commercial uses.
And also moving the economic disclaimer language from 324 up to the beginning of the section on 322.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote. All right, that passes four to one. We will move on to... Should I ask for an amended agenda right now to push consideration items five and six to the first meeting in March? Yes.
Do you think we have enough time now?
Unless you think we have enough time in a half hour to get this done, Lorenzo. But I can't guarantee we're not going to have wild questions. I'd like to end at 11:30. So, somebody make a motion to push consideration items five and six to the first meeting in March.
So moved.
Can you do it all in a half an hour?
Do it all?
You could do it all in a half an hour?
Yeah.
Okay, do it all.
Why don't we take the critical one first, because, respect for you?
Take it out of order?
Yeah, just take seven first, just to be, that's an action item.
Yeah.
Yellow cards?
I don't think we do.
We don't have any yellow cards for any of these items. Unless anyone wants to submit a card.
I do.
Okay, so we'll hear item seven first.
Can somebody just make a motion to move item seven?
I did.
Before five or five with a second?
I move that we move item seven before five and six.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can we vote? Yes.
We voted, sorry. Thank you.
Did we lose Lorenzo? Oh, I thought we lost Lorenzo.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Bye, Lauren.
What?
Wonder what I did in the beginning, Sue.
I did.
Just one.
Got your turn.
If we don't, we'll pass it back to you.
Yeah. Yeah.
She's smart.
We're commenting on your binder, and how we wish, we have binder envy. And I don't have one.
I don't have a four-inch.
Size matters, girl. You know, I saved everybody money so worth it. I'm going to put the rubber band around this. District team wasn't hurt?
All righty, so Mayor Martin, members of the Pacifica City Council. My name's Lorenzo Heinz Jr. I am your Assistant City Manager. I'm here to present tonight the mid-year update. And I have one more updated page to pass out. And if you can pass it around to Sarah.
Goes to Sarah also.
And Kevin and Michelle.
And Kevin, and Michelle.
So what you have before you is a PowerPoint that I'm going to go through, if I can find the clicker over here. And, and the page that I just handed out to you is a replacement page for the consolidated revenue source by department. Thank you, Sam.
So that's a replacement page for page what in the book?
Attachment 7A, packet page 949.
Oh. Looking at this.
We're going to start on page 15 of the PowerPoint.
Go.
So we're here to present the mid-year update. Our recommended action is to move to adopt a resolution to increase the adopted budget for the general fund appropriation by 626,000. That reflects $450,000 in additional revenue and departmental, and departmental budgets based on current information. I'm also asking for an appropriation of $75,000 from the general fund legal reserve to address increased expenditures, and to appropriate $200,000 from the compensated absences reserve to address 2019-20 separation costs for employees. I'm also requesting that we reschedule the revenue transfer from the general fund childcare account to Fund 22, the capital improvement account. And I'm also requesting a program increase revenue and expenditure authority and Fund 18 to basically increase the appropriation to 17,714,629 to reflect increased legal expenditures. So on page 16, you find, page 16 of your PowerPoint, you find the summary of the mid-year plan. And it also is represented in the replacement page that I just gave you. So the total appropriation of the total amount of revenues has grown from the budgeted amount of 36.124 million to 36.751 million. So that's good news. On the expenditure side, we have grown, or we projected to grow 36, from 36.124 million to 36.495 million. So that was just sort of the good news in a nutshell. The council voted and adopted the 2019 budget on June 24, 2019. At that time, the general fund appropriation was 36.124 million. This mid-year update to the budget contains proposed adjustments to both projected revenues and expenses that reflect current information. So our forecast model, we are projecting the general fund budgeted revenues are up approximately 635,000. That's about 1.7 million higher than projected. We'll talk about why in a second. We're also projecting an increase in budgeted expenditures of about $370,000. So that gives us a nice little surplus, but if you net that, 635 and the 370. However, of that surplus, about 214,000 of it is related to restricted parks, beaches, and recreation program revenues. And so the actual net surplus that we see at mid-year, that we're projecting at mid-year, is about 42,000. And so on page 18, I've summarized the main revenue drivers. And the first driver is property taxes. And based on the receipts that we've seen thus far this year, we feel a revision to the estimate to 12.785 million or $200,000 increase is recommended. Sales tax, we feel there's a revision required of about $115,000. Other taxes, we're asking for an increase of roughly $540,000. This reflects increased revenues for cannabis retail, and also reflects the movement of the property transfer tax category out of the property taxes and into department program category. On the expenditure side, we're asking for an increase in the city attorney budget. There've been a number of extraordinary and unexpected demands for legal services. These include services, increased amount of time for Public Records Act requests, litigation defense, and legal costs associated with 310 through 330 Esplanade Preservation Project. And so we're requesting that $75,000 be moved from the legal reserve, which currently sits at $100,000. That we move that 75 into the general fund operating budget. Parks, beaches, and recreation, in the packet, there is a typo. And I, I guess I just didn't have my coffee that morning. But on packet page 943, you have an old number for parks, beaches, and recreation. And their budget, their budget should actually be 5.120 million, and that's their 1920 budget. and that's their 1920 budget. They're asking for the addition of three positions to assist them with enrollment and staffing issues, and they can accommodate those positions with their current budget this year. However, they will require most likely an additional $270,000 annually to hang on to those additional positions. And so, are there questions?
Wouldn't those be like neutral because they're paying a fee for childcare that would, I would assume, would cover the costs and salary of the new positions?
Director Michael Perez will join us shortly.
It's up to you. Okay. Good evening, council members. Can you repeat the question, please?
If you're asking for three new positions, which, you know, I understand the need, wouldn't they be, wouldn't they be covered by the increased fee revenue from having more kids in the program?
We're not proposing right now to have more kids in the program. We are making more money, and if we do hire these folks right now, we're not gonna spend all that money anyway, because by the time we'd hire them, there's maybe gonna be two, two and a half months left for the fiscal year. But next year, we, we're not doing our budget yet for next year, but if we were to hire them for a full year right now, the money that we have would pay for them, and it would be budget neutral whether we added more children or not.
That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And so the next adjustment we're requesting is an increase to the public works budget of $70,000, and 30 of the 70 will be dollars to support a traffic speed survey, which has to be conducted by public works every five years in order for us to enforce the speed limits in our town. And the, the next request is for $40,000 related to signs that are necessary for the oversized vehicle ordinance slash resolution. So the total request from public works on the field services side and engineering side is an additional $70,000.
Lorenzo?
Yes.
$40,000 for signs. I, can someone help me understand that?
Yes.
For life, I mean, I just can't understand spending $40,000 on signs, which is...
Deputy Director Sam Bautista is more than willing to give you that information.
Good evening, council member Beer. $40,000 worth of signs, so that currently engineering is designing a sign program alongside with the police department and the city attorney's office. And these signs are going, for these oversized vehicles are going to be fabricated, so typically a sign costs about $150 to $200. And then a pole, which is probably another $100, so that we're now up to three. And then the labor to put it in the sign is around 50 to 100. So it's about $400 per sign. So if, you know, when you add it all together, it's a lot of money. And so, right now, this, this is just the start of the sign program. We don't know what, we're just designing it right now, but, so, you know, estimate about $400 a sign.
Okay, thank you for the information. I appreciate your help.
Sure, thank you.
So the next request on the expenditure side is a request from public works wastewater treatment. They are currently experiencing some legal expenditures that are beyond what was budgeted related to the wet weather equalization basin project. We anticipate that they will need an additional $350,000 in additional expenditure authority for the rest of this year. The next request is $25,000 to do a civic center space study. Our civic center is roughly 60 years old and showing major signs of age. Our civic center offices are designed based on historical placement and not based on the optimal efficiency of city processes. The city is evaluating and addressing a number of immediate facilities issues. Council budgeted roughly $125,000 in the 1920 budget to deal with roof repairs, window replacement, and various other things. However, we find that there is a greater need to have someone come in and take a look at City Hall and give us suggestions as to how we can optimize the space, both in City Hall and in the planning and PBNR building. This will help us accommodate our processes and programs going into the future, since it does not appear that we will be getting a new civic center anytime soon. So we've got to make do with what we have, and so this is our first step. The next request is a transfer from the compensated absences fund, our fund reserve, and that reserve sits at $200,000, and is expressly there to address large payouts for terminating employees. And so we've had a number of employees retire this year, and the actual retirement costs are about $221,000. However, we're only requesting 220. The departments will absorb the other 21,000 within their budgets, and so we only need 200,000. We also need a technical adjustment, and I mentioned this earlier, that there were childcare, childcare reserve funds that were programmed to come into the general fund as a revenue source to support capital repairs. However, since our capital repairs are charged in our general capital improvement fund, which is Fund 22, we need to move those dollars out of the general fund and into Fund 22. And so that concludes my report, and I ask for your approval of the resolution.
Questions?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. Passes, five, nothing. All right, so should we move on to pension costs?
Sure, sure. Clerk Coffee, would you load that up for me? So we're gonna go through, we've, we've done a review of pensions every year since, I believe, 2017. And so this is our annual update and sort of an annual sort of primer as to what a pension is and, and the implications of the pension as far as the city is concerned. So pension is, a pension plan is defined as an agreement to provide a defined retirement benefit in exchange for services. The pension is funded in a trust, which is essentially an investment portfolio structured to provide enough funds to pay the retirees. The benefits are paid from the trust to the retirees on a monthly basis, and the city contracts with CalPERS a defined benefit plan for the majority of our employees. The plan's funded status, and you hear that term quite a bit, is the relationship between the liability associated with the employee's retirement and the assets needed to pay this liability. And so the typical pension liability includes amounts for, amounts that are paid to active employees, amounts for, not, not paid to active employees, but dollars that are set aside for active employees, dollars that are being paid to retirement, retired employees, and dollars that are being set aside to inactive employees. And those are the folks who have left us and moved to other cities, or other governments, or other opportunities. So the pension plan defined, we'll keep going. Now, the assets, we just talked about the liabilities, but the assets are accumulated through employer contribution, i.e. the city's contribution, active employee contributions, and that is our, are the employees of the city, and investment earnings. The expected investment earnings rate of return is referred to as the discount rate. The investment return and the accumulated contributions, offset by the benefits and expenses paid, creates the market asset value of the pension. So it's basically a big checking account. Dollars come in because of employee contributions, employer contributions, and investment earnings, dollars go out where we're paying active retirees, and, but dollars are also being set aside for employees that are currently working, or employees, employees that are working and have moved to other entities. The difference between the pension liability and the market asset value represents the unfunded liability. And so this is our pension formula on page five. And so we've got, the liability is for active employee, retired employees, inactive employees, less the market asset value, and whatever's left is the unfunded liability. So our relationship between the city and CalPERS, and that the city contracts with CalPERS for most of our employees. As of 2017, the city paid retirement benefits to 331 retirees and has to accrue pension liability for an additional 175 employees. The city contributes a share of the pension contributions, and the employees contribute a share of pension contributions. Additionally, the city has bargained with labor units so that the employees also play a small share of the city's pension cost. CalPERS manages our city contributions and have historically projected about a 7.5% rate of return. However, over the last five years, CalPERS' actual rate of return has been 5.8%. I'm gonna read to you from a press release from CalPERS dated July 11, 2019. And so they were talking about the returns for fiscal year 2018-19, and it says, "This year's return brings the total fund performance to 5.8% for the five-year time period. However, nine point, it was 9.1% for the 10-year time period and 5.8% for the 20-year time period. Over the past 30 years, the CalPERS fund has returned an average of 8.1% annually." So, as you can see, there are varying returns, but in my mind, the, the return that's most impactful is the last five years. So if they're shooting for a discount rate or a rate of return of seven to 7.5%, and they're only returning five, that's gonna end up creating an unfunded liability, and that's what we're paying. So, in part because of our rate of return, because the rate of return has been below the discount rate, the city has an unfunded liability. The city annually budgets and pays the required contributions, which includes the payback necessary to alleviate this unfunded liability as determined by CalPERS. So on December 21, 2016, this is when CalPERS informed the world that they were dropping their discount rate from 7.5% to seven over a number of years. And so, for the 2018-19 period through the 2021 period, they're dropping it down, as you see there, 2021 period, they're dropping it down to 7%, which is still higher than the 5.8 they're actually yielding. So the pessimist in me is expecting our unfunded liability to continue. And so, on page nine, and my apologies for the tiny writing, I wanted to give you a sense of how the city's pension liability, how it looks in our, in our general ledger, that wanted you to make sure you understood that our pension has many layers and has many colors. We have our pension expense, which is our normal pension expense. This would exist, if, if the fund was, if we didn't have an unfunded liability, this would be the pension cost that we would, we would be paying. We also pay a pension, we also pay pension costs to PARS, which is another pension. And apparently sometime in the past, former employees decided it was time to create another pension plan, and that's the PARS pension plan. And so those are the costs for that. We also have pension expense for the pension obligation bonds, and I just showed you what the debt service is on those. You will notice that the debt service in the 2021 year is really small, because we just refinanced those, and so we're trying to get all the savings we can in the first couple of years. And so that last year, that 2021 represents the last year of the savings. We also have the payback cost, and that, those are the big numbers that you see down there at the bottom. And, and that's how our, the, how our pension liability stacks up. These numbers are built into the long-term forecast as well, but I wanted you to see how they all come together. The year-over-change is your bottom row, so you can see the growth and the numbers in there. And I also have a more easy-to-read chart here on packet page 875, because the bottom line is, these, this chart that we have at the top of packet page 875 represents the increase in our pension costs over the next 10 years. On page 10 of your PowerPoint, it's just some additional information, so you can see how the normal cost and the, and the catch-up cost, which is called the UAL, break out by the individual groups that we have. So we have safety, police, safety fire, and miscellaneous, and basically anybody who's not a member of the PD or a member of the fire department is a miscellaneous employee. Only a name, they're all special. So you can see how it all stacked up, and I put that in there for additional information, plus there was a grand jury requirement that was required of the city and all the cities in San Mateo County, and there was certain information that we have to provide, and this is one of those nuggets of information that we have to provide, and I thought it would be great to show you here. And so as a result of the CalPERS policy change, we estimate that the city will incur additional pensions, additional pension expenses averaging $510,000 over the next five years, dropping to $285,000 increase in the successive five years. In addition, the growth in the expenditures is expected to continue, albeit at a lower rate until FY 2031 and '32. We'll incorporate all these estimates in the long-term forecast and into the 2021 budget development process.
Lorenzo, go back once, one slide. So by incur additional pension expenses, expenses averaging 510 annually, that's compounded, correct?
Well, no, that's, that's, that's what happens if I, if I, if I, if I go into a spreadsheet and I mark the first five years and get an average of what those numbers are, that's what that average is. So that, 510 represents the average of 598 through 332 that you see here on packet page 875. But I wanted to figure out, I wanted you, I wanted to convey it in a concise manner. I didn't want to say 598, 700, it's just the average is about 510. Any other questions? Okay. And so the tools that we have to address these pension costs consist, as I mentioned earlier, our bargaining units are contributing to the city's pension liability, and we appreciate that. Council authorized the establishment of a Section 115 trust for the purpose of addressing future pension costs with the 2019-20 budget. I have already reviewed one vendor. I am reviewing a second vendor, and once I make a decision, I'll recommend it to the city manager, and we will bring that back to you, because we'll need an appropriation from fund balance to move it into the trust. Actually, we already have the appropriation, but we want to make sure we, we inform you that it's being done. The other thing that we've done is we've refunded or refinanced as much debt as we can to drive down our, our future interest expense, and that would free up capital or funds to address these increasing pension costs. And the last tool that we have is just our, our commitment to bringing a balanced budget to you on an annual basis, so we will make it work. And that concludes that presentation. And so this report is just for your information only.
11:30.
Thank you, Lorenzo.
My pleasure.
So then we're gonna... So the long-term financial plan update is gonna be first meeting in May, March? March?
Yeah, that's fine. If we're not gonna knock it out now, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Next agenda, I think that's a good idea. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, great. So we will adjourn. Thank you, Lorenzo, for your flexibility in memory of Karen Medina. Thank you.